Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the July 7th meeting of the Southway Township Board of Commissioners. If everyone will please rise and join with plenty of reason.
One is to the United States of America and is a Republican for its states. One issue is in this law with the justice.
Thank you all. Could we do a quick home call? Commissioner Wong.
Here.
Commissioner Maung.
Here.
Commissioner Seton.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Thank you. All right. So I'd like to note that all public sessions of the Southway Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted on Board Docs for the public access. I'd also like to note that the Board did meet an executive session on June 23rd to discuss legal and personal law. With that being said, we're going to go right into our meeting minutes or our meeting agenda for this evening. And first on our agenda are meeting minutes. I'll connect to Tracy, who has the whole of the hour.
Then I can show you.
So we're off the block topic here, everybody. So there were some questions on where to find past meeting minutes and recordings on our website if you were interested. So we thought we'd do a real quick two-minute tutorial to show you how to find that information.
So when you come up to Board Docs, this is, you know, you see the featured meetings from tonight. You're going to go to Board of Commissioners' Meetings. Going to click on it here. Give you the agenda. And all of the recordings are listed from January 20th. You just scroll down and all of the recordings and YouTube videos are attached when you go down through May of 2021. So it's really right from the homepage of Board Docs.
And also, I'd just like to know if anybody is ever online looking for something in particular or you can't access some meeting minutes, all you do need to do is give a call, take a call Tracy Direct. She can certainly guide you through that. But it is, you know, we did switch platforms recently and it's quite easy to clicks to get to the Board Meeting Minutes and the audio. So I just wanted to show everybody how to do that. All right. That being said, let's move right into our agenda this evening. And first on our agenda for consideration and possible action are the June 2nd, 2021 Board of Commissioners Meeting Minutes.
I think I mentioned the board minutes as per them.
We have a, is there any comment or question for the board on the meeting minutes? We have a motion on the board from Commissioner Wong and a second from Commissioner Seton and we'll call it three to none. Commissioner Wong.
Yes.
Commissioner Wong.
Yes.
Commissioner Seton.
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Great. Gary, the minutes passed. Next this evening, we have no presentations, but we have one ordinance for consideration to advertise this evening. It's a law coming ordinance. We were saying it's an ordinance amending the classified ordinances of Southway Township had a new chapter 250 entitled Quality of Life Improvement Ordinance, which provides one, a ticketing program to potentially resolve certain property maintenance and other property violation matters in a more expeditious manner than traditional ordinance enforcement; two, procedures for issuing tickets under the ticketing program; and three, preserves the traditional ordinance enforcement and further provides for settoability, failure to enforce, not a waiver, applicability, and ineffectivity. Mr. Horrible, please share with us a little bit about this new ordinance.
A little bit? Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight I introduce your consideration and request to advertise the quality of life improvement ordinance. This ordinance was developed by taking components of the 2015 International Maintenance Code and other township ordinances in addition to the common nuisance complaints I've received over the last few years from township residents. And the result combined, and the result combined into the more concise ordinance for use by code enforcement. The groundwork for this ordinance was based on a similar program that I oversaw for fourteen years in the city of Allenham. That program over the years has been adopted by several municipal authorities, such as Langhastert, Redding, Hazelton, Wilkshire, Mokla, Monmouth City Borough, Millwood Borough, and Cole Township, the name of the few. For the most part, nuisance complaints insist of conditions, whether short-term or long-term, appearing in the neighborhood and have impacted the quality of life for the residents of that neighborhood. Most common types are high grass in weeds, unshovelled sidewalks, accumulation traction of green old properties, headowners not cleaning up after their animals, and nuisance vehicles. As you can see, these are conditions that are visible on the exterior of the property and have a negative effect on the neighborhood. This ordinance was developed to address these complaints and streamline the process to achieve compliance in the words of Dr. Matt White. The use of the parat township ordinance is required to notice violations in the appeal process of the notice, client's time to seven thirty days, and manually notices by certified letter, which in my experience, if a person is getting a certified letter from the government to you, they are more than likely not compliant and have fines returned that are undeliverable by the post office, the code enforcement office, or posted on the file. One can understand that this incorporated process would be applicable for both structural and safety issues found at the property that require stress, but for common nuisances that can grant a compliance process to the frustration of the neighbors who have to look upon or anything. A simple example of that, for high grass in weeds, you must go through the notice. The notice process each time there's a violation, whereas in the quality of life improvement ordinance, it requires a town to prove. As you can see, there are some similarities to this ordinance in the recently passed Melissa ordinance. This ordinance will make use of violation ticketing system, which will decrease the amount or time of code enforcement officers by handling the violation ticket, paying us an appeal and house by using a specific timeline. With the issuance of citations, you would have multiple hearings and continuums of appeal. This can be drawn out for extended period of the period and the property may or may not comply with the process. In some cases, if the property was compliant prior to the hearing, the citation gets dismissed and therefore all parties have to take time out of their day to attend the proceeding. The fine for violation of this ordinance will be $100, except for legal dumping, which is very high. These fines are assessed through each case. A violation ticket can also be assessed a late fee penalty. In addition, any associated cost or township services can be added to violation ticket. If the ticket goes unpaid or if violation is not addressed, violation may be resolved from a citation being issued in court. But with all this said, quality of life improvement ordinance must be looked at as an additional tool for code enforcement to use to achieve the annual wishes of compliance. In closing, I'd like to leave you with the words of a township resident a few weeks ago received a request for information from a township resident regarding issues of the neighboring property. In the request, it was stated, and I quote, "Is it time for Southway Township to visit ordinances of its government? How old are Southway Township ordinances? Please address this complaint and then please address the root of the larger problem and revisit Southway Township ordinances for that problem." I did speak to that resident and explain her that this ordinance will be dropped and how it could be an additional tool. She said thank you. So with that said, I'd like you to take the opportunity to consider another tool for the use by code enforcement as pertaining to addressing of the root cause of larger problem dealing with the problem properties of the quality of life of residents of the township. Again, thank you for your time. At this time, if you've got any questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any questions from the board on this particular consideration?
Thank you. I have a question. You mentioned that the clients want to be.
As for any violation of the ordinance, except that the topic will be filed.
Way to, and by the way, if somebody is losing violation, does he get notified?
There is a provision in there for the officer's distraction to do the action to There are, like, illegal dumping. You want to get notified to. There are some things like, you have the unshovelled sidewalks. There's like a time period in there that's built in depending on the weather, snow, sleet, etc., etc. So there are different things that would need good results in a paid immediate versus timeframe notice to do for. It's directly to that.
And the discretion of.
Well, the discretion of the officer plus it's the consistency of the problem. So there will be.
It's the same steps as the noise that seems very similar as well.
It's very similar.
Or the noise ordinance.
Right. I mean, it follows the same laws. That's the way they did it in that book too, to the law. So that, that work with.
Do they escalate?
No. It's not.
Just a quick question, like anything like usually it's a big apple that I'm in for everybody. So I would assume that's going to be a lot of repeat offenders. Is there any, like, extra fine or just continue with the?
Well, there's, you know, to a point in time, there is a possibility that it may go straight to citation. You know, if it's going to be set up with the operating procedure, standard operating procedure where the same property does repeat violation over and over again, then you're going to have a cutoff where you just go to, or the court will be. And that would be based upon the tangency of that they're even bringing the property in any.
Are there any calls, would you say, that you get on these nuisance things?
Every day?
Every day.
Every day. Every day is variety of different.
It's a constant.
I've had more calls on these than I do on, like, exterior floors, windows, paint, things like that, which is mainly copied, covered under the international property name. So there's a lot of more exterior type services there, plus some interior things. But as far as dealing with the trash, things like that, very small in that point. This brings more use to, like, a lot of people, it's just that this is a vehicle. They started, it has nothing easy early to now, but they're all fine. And neighbors want to see things happen quick, as quickly as possible. And there is a few complaints, it's all, but.
I think five days, you're going to be within twenty-four hours or something.
And that will develop with the standard operating procedure that we use for this
Commissioner Seton, you have a question? This is a follow-up to Commissioner Seton's, so that standard operating procedure, is that going to be incorporated into this so that it's more more.
No. That could be as many.
We're potentially going to add an ordinance that could potentially last for twenty years because it's updated. So I'm just curious why we wouldn't add that in now. So you mentioned at some point going to court, where, I couldn't find in here where that's procedure, you know, that's set there. I only see it under restitution. It's the last page. So at what point does that, doesn't state that one step in the process?
Under 250-10 enforcement B, the word pops out, the discretion of the officer, and if the violations are continuous or egregious, the issue of officer, like, the citation that, issue of warning, and then should be looked at. 250-14 B, two, citation shall be issued against only persons of any payment requested hearing in twenty days of additional violation ticket.
But isn't that a hearing? Pice of laws.
No, that's it. That's, that's at the magistrate's. What happens is if they don't pay the ticket, the violation then reverts back to the original violation. You can't issue a citation if they, you have to revert back to the original violation. So let's say they have a nuisance car in the property, they didn't turn out, it was through, and they had their late fee, they don't do anything, twenty days hits, you pay, and then the citation can be issued, and then from there, it'll be issued for having a nuisance vehicle, it can't be issued if they. One thing that I want to, you know, clear up with these ordinance, and any of these ordinances with it is, is that the goal is to work with the person to gain compliance. And we all want, you know, it's not that it's a ticket writing agency, we don't want to get into that. You just want to be able to gain compliance so that there's, you know, harmony in the neighborhood. It's just an extra tool.
So back to this paragraph on restitution. It's not clear to me, and I wrote this three times, that is a distinction. It's under 250-14, filing a penalty, population ticket, it goes on to penalty, citation, and then to restitution. That's the first time that I've seen the magistrate or district judge mention, but it doesn't explain the process of when that picks in. So it's not clear to me, and is there room for people to interpret that in different ways if it's not necessarily a straight path from ticket, violation ticket, non-compliance actually? It doesn't seem like it's clearly defined in this ordinance.
And so we're okay with A, the violation ticket applies. Okay, in fact, 250-14, A. Then B, you have a penalty, and a citation issued if they don't pay. Then C, goes through citation fine if it goes directly to citation or if it's a citation or penalty to pay. That's what the magistrate can fit them. So the magistrate finds the individual guilty, they can start the $100 penalty back. Very easily. I think it's very plausible that I've seen it personally. So that kind of is the guidelines for the magistrate. So as far as restitution, that, you know, covers, let's say, there was grass coming out of property that the township had to pay, costs $250. The restitution then would be the $250 goes to the township, and then township attorney attends the hearing, and they also have the restitution out in there, which will be covered by the township department. So that's easy to do.
I could interject. Commissioner Kelly, perhaps what might be helpful is, you know, just mentioning that by operation of the law, without the reference to the text of the ordinance, when you talk about the citation, that automatically means you're now engaged in the process with the district magistrate. So even though it may not say that in A, B, C, when it talks about citations, it's understood under law, that's for your app.
Thank you. Clarify. I had a couple other questions. So currently, I, was I the impression, I heard back, you came to the township, we instituted a suite program, which is similar to Allenham has.
That's, I call it, it's something that.
So we've been using that program to the.
No, no, this is, this is what you're talking for. Might actually be the suite program that is similar to Allenham, but you're calling it a problem.
Okay. So I can use that. And I wonder, hearing, is that what it means?
Sweeten, basically consisted of solving a basic closure and vacation programs. But it's a form, eighteen different other meetings, running a tender, say, handled by seven other departments in the city, etc. So when we came over here, that acronym would never work. So what was designed was a little longer, like, that's kind of another use of how something similar to those, you know, nuisance ordinance, a popular one, I've committed a use of the actual, that's their acronym.
And one of the sections in here has to do with political sign restrictions.
Correct.
And I have a question and a concern about that. So this section 250-7, where E, political signs in the public driveway shall be permitted to be placed out no earlier than forty-five thousand days prior to election, or within ten days, apply to political sign outside of property. So I understand, I'm doing some research, something like all this through back in 2010, by a candidate for political office because of one of the sign requirements at the time. I did see that the US Supreme Court has ruled on this matter, it's a fine line with freedom of speech, the First Amendment. We run the risk, so if we take down a sign, void seven days before the election, that someone's going to say we're violating their freedom of speech. There was a case out of Pittsburgh, where township enacted some similar language that we have, and the court ruled in favor of the person with the political sign. I'm just curious that, since we are now starting to put an ordinance in place that has to do with political signs, are we opening ourselves up to potential issues with that, given that there has been a Supreme Court?
What we've done in this ordinance is, as far as on any township property, public property, it's a sign. So we put this in there just to have a guideline for placement of political signs. What happened is, and it kind of corresponds a little bit with zoning also. It allows us, and what we did this past year, we actually sent a local, local parties, sheriff, chairman, and, so we need to talk to them. Because, but if it's on someone's private property, you want to apply. So it's all to have is on someone's property. And, you know, it's very big or all good.
I'll just note, Commissioner Kelly, that the issue of political signs and sign provision in general, as well as this ordinance, we've studied extensively by Attorney Roberts in our office, who is on right, is similar to First Amendment expert, and an advocate for personal rights, so he was comfortable with it. So I defer to him, and he was very clear that the ordinance is passing muster as far as he's concerned.
I mean, we've talked about it all the time, so. We don't have any First Amendment.
And how do we arrive at forty-five days prior, as opposed to sixty or thirty or fifteen or whatever? And one other question, under vehicles, it states that parking is not permitted on grass or dirt area of property, well, parking areas must comply with code. Does that mean if I have in my yard, the side of my driveway, dirt, and I park a car there, am I going to be violating this code?
This ordinance does take into account. One thing is, it did not deal with any other ordinance of the township. So currently in the zoning ordinance, you have to park on, on skate surface. So you shouldn't be parking on grass. And so this just complements that, makes the enforcement more easier.
Well, I was just mainly dirt, but my, I know that.
That's.
Park shouldn't be on grass, but so someone could potentially be in violation here.
And it's considered where, like, Commissioner Seton said, where, you drive up the street and see everybody's parked apart in the place, and you start sitting there, it's right out. But.
My comment, I should.
That's all I have, Randy.
I just have a few questions. So what's in place now, as far as the ordinance go, is there nothing in place or is there something in place and this is going to displace it?
It's not going to displace it. It will supplement, because we did, it said we need to peel our ordinances from the township. Sometimes it works, you have to peel a previous ordinance, you know, that one, avoid, and you'll think, oh, this complements that previous tool, if this is the pivot, there's still a nuisance vehicle on, I mean, nineteen, that, or the ordinance, and so there, and it's still there. So there are other ordinances for you to.
Okay. Thank you. When did work get started on this C ordinance?
This ordinance got started several months when I came to the township, and I had repurposed into the ways. So that one hit, and this one here would come back. This is a common one, this ordinance, that I have on that.
Okay, so it's been a long time? It's been a while, okay?
Yeah.
I'll come back to that. What's the source of the information in this ordinance? Did you, only a general answer, is this taken wholesale from some other municipality or did you take, like, the majority of it from somewhere else and you complemented it and refined it?
Yeah, it's a combination of several different municipalities, but the language and things that were more, most common called.
So this request is to advertise. So what happens there to get that policy in the news media? And then what's the next step?
The next step is adopt.
So we advertise and it's automatically adopted, or are we going to come back here to another main ad? Okay. When does a plaintiff could comment on this ordinance close?
We receive this ordinance, we, for almost a month now.
Yeah.
So I hope that specifically comments and questions would have, would have belonged.
So my question is, when does the window close? This is a procedural question. Sure. If the Board were to decide tonight to advertise for potential adoption, it'll be on a future agenda in the next meeting, the meeting afterward, most likely. And at that time, the Board can vote to adopt or not. If there are commissioner comments, other comments between now and that time, it would likely necessitate doing advertising all over again. So as a Board, if you feel the ordinance is not to your satisfaction, it's not quite ready for adoption, then my suggestion is don't advertise it. But advertise it and then look to have additional changes, means always time line.
So to clarify, if we advertise it and then at our next meeting, no changes, can we make a wording that is included here, is exactly what will be advertised and no changes?
If there's a comma or a the that's missing, that can be changed, but substance would not change. And if there is a change to substance, then that will be advertised.
Thank you. I have a quick question. I know currently, I went to the website and it has a section under code and it lists the different vehicles and animals and all that, and there's a form to fill out for resident complaint. So I noticed that several of the sections here leave the violation to the discretion of the officer. The intent will, like, for trees, if he observes a tree that seems diseased, he can require it.
Require the owner to get it.
Require the owner to hire an arborist or someone to check on the tree when that is. So that doesn't require a citizen complaint that leads to the discretion of, of the officer. Will we still have that form as a requirement for people to fill out?
Absolutely.
So there is a written record of complaint, that's not taking this.
No, no, not at all. I mean, this will cover, you know, the. No, no, not at all, I mean, this will cover, you know, the request for information published, fills out and submits. Along with any collateral that is going to be dealt with.
And just to follow up, the, under the current code enforcement on the township website, it includes, so the most cited law is for jumping at large, open burning, weeds over a foot in height. Junk vehicles and equipment, certain businesses operating from a home, obstruction of, there's like triangle intersections, pools without fencing, adequate fencing to keep children from gaining access and littering in the kind. That seems to me fairly comprehensive, but you're saying that what we have right now, for citizens to fill out a form for these type of items, there's not a big path to get relief for a resident.
So outside of the website, right?
No, I'm saying with what's on the website now, so the citizen has a complaint, for example, for fall grass, weeds over a foot, they go along, they sign a form. Send it to you, do we not have in our ordinances right now, the ability for you to go and.
Yeah, it's under the.
Correct.
But in that code.
A violation.
Well, check on violation, verify it, then it's a case where that code you have to like. It's violation, and then I notice the violation gives the, obviously the violation address, violation, the ordinance that follows the section on the code. And then from there, it also follows, bring out right to appeal to the political approach of appeal for in twenty days of receiving the letter. So you can actually appeal, get in the letter and then got that a reasonable, some sort of reasonable timeframe to correct the violation. And that could descend out right there. And if you overlook that, then you risk yourself getting deceptive where when we have court. The court fees allow, your problem. So that's why a lot of municipalities are using this because you know, courts said earlier, there's a chance of passing. Okay, maybe one of those, maybe the officer is in the court. And then the other party gets out and you get a return. And then from there, thirty days to appeal the court's decision after the town. So in the interim, in the meantime, the, that's still probably the issue that has not fallen and they're wondering why. Again, it's just a tool to use to try to answer right complaints.
So now you only cite that we poll weed once, and then what happens? You said once a year you can cite.
No, not once a year, every time. In the primary meetings, go down, send a notice of violation out every time.
Right, because with this new one, it'll be once a year.
You can send the first notice out, put in there a lack of stating that it's a违违 violation will receive the county your tax. And then if there's another violation, I can go out and photograph it.
So they'll just continue to get tickets for the grass being high?
Well, if they don't pay.
If they don't pick up.
If they don't take care of it.
Sorry, the offender.
The offender. I think the program that the offenders diminish very quickly. I can't say that the people who own properties without a parent's sake, but most of the people who are homeowners or renters, they're able to get these, you know, and they will, they'll take care of it. Most, none of that.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, my remaining motion is void.
I have just some questions.
One of the fines and penalties, Mr. Parker, there is. Hundred dollars, no more than a thousand dollars on each offense. Or imprisoned, home in ninety days.
Who goes? That is standard language for citation. Citizens, you need to start.
They may just put somebody, we just.
Like I said earlier.
Somebody would be cut off.
Okay, if it's language, then it's just not even have a reason to be an option. What's, I mean, we really need to have that in.
Sorry, is that through standard?
Sure, it's number one standard, but sort of question, should we eliminate if that's not the real one? In experience, and this is probably spanning so a dozen municipalities. Magisterial district judges very seldom are going to come anywhere near issuing the maximum type penalty. Just doesn't work that way, doesn't happen that way. And if you ratchet down the potential penalties, then the likelihood is that the penalty actually imposed would be even less because of that dynamic. And then it starts to lose its enforcement.
And you'll see that also not all the time, so that that clause is a part of the prison.
It's technically under the law, this is a criminal procedure.
Do you have a question from the board? Tisha. Um, Tisha, just to add that. Ten thirty four Lowell Street. I agree with Commissioner Kelly's initial statement about the. The warning being written and not just something that's understood and worked out. You know, trust you, but you win the lottery when you live in this. In the time that's been passed, we don't know who we're going to get and I'm concerned because I've seen too many times these kind of ordinance, ordinances used as. A tool to punish people who are already struggling. I'm thinking of like, they belong, this kid parked on the grass. And she gets up, she doesn't realize it and it's morning and now they're taking it. She can't afford it, or my my neighbor who works long hours and can't cut his grass, he can't afford to hire someone to do it, but like if you didn't give a warning, then I'm like, you guys. Take three off or take a half day to get it done, so.
I think to answer your question, for the most part, the one process would be that. It's not the date, not the reason. As I said, it is, it would like within fourteen years and the warnings do go a long way. If anything, it opens a dialogue between the township and the community, and to me, that's very important. You know, it comes down to we're we're all in the same situation, we're all on compliance, we all want to have friendly neighborhoods, we all want to have enjoyable neighborhoods. So yeah, sometimes things happen and sometimes it happens for a reason and, you know, we can always.
I'd love to see one of those working so, so fair enough, understand is to make sure that, you know, it's not forced differently, like you get a pass, but not you, you know. Our perception that that's happening, right?
Jamal Ahmed seventeen sixty nine, that's causing. Seems like from what you said, the only challenge for noncompliance is the threat of residence. Because otherwise, if someone has a big property and then violation for everything like rats and poop and car and trees, it would be cheaper to be noncompliant. Thousand dollar, it's be cheaper to just pay a thousand dollar than to kind of become noncompliant.
Well, I understand what you're saying. There are other ordinances that cover those that have other standards between them or sometimes could be higher at the necessary level. Go ahead, see what it is that we will. So there are things that aren't covered up here, can be covered up in something else or similar, that it may be better to take the other ordinance and look at the situation. But except this is just a tool to exist for common nuisance violations that can be corrected for the most part within the. You know, of receiving the notice. There are, there are situations that will, you know, take longer. But, you know. We will address those when we can. But I understand what you're saying about in prison. I make the turn of pages that the experience I have, the likelihood of someone going to prison, have to follow it.
So my assumption is correct, where somebody will sell, just get a thousand dollar and take care of all this thing they have.
Well, they can get a fine every day. There are, there are.
Anyway, I think you understand my concern.
Right, I understand your concern, and I think for the most part, the experience I have that most people will start in whatever they can for the ordinance.
I think everyone should keep in mind that this particular ordinance is not the only tool in the toolbox. This ordinance is another option available to municipal staff to deal with the problem. It's a less formal, less time consuming, less penalizing approach to really deal with citizens who really know they should do the right thing and most of the time will do the right thing. It's a tool to prompt them to do the right thing. We have a truly problematic citizen who refuses to cooperate, we use a different tool for that toolbox.
Thank you.
Do you have any question?
Richard, I saw from our department, I'm speaking on behalf of, excuse me, Emergency Services. And is that the type of homes that you're referring to? Like, would I be at all consider, as you think, to advertise this for not that used to type homes that hinder police, fire, EMS? Not only for entry, but when we do get there, if the outside of those bad, it can be a real hazard for firefighters inside, so. You may just be hooking at the. The perimeter and it's a whole nother condition inside, which we're not even getting into here, but. I definitely agree with what you're trying to pose here because as a firefighter, try to drag a hose tight on somebody has a front yard decorated with collectibles that have been there for many, many years. It's terrible safety hazard and hindrance to not only ourselves, but EMS and police. Please consider that.
So Richard, you're saying from a safety, from a safety angle, there's true value into this sort of ordinance?
Yes.
Anybody else from the audience?
I have one more question.
One, one second, Marie. Hi, Marie Nord, seventy twenty five Victoria Lane. And my question has to do with the weed problem. I, my property is a forest stewardship, it's designated that. And part of what we do is a lot of native plants and there are many people who don't understand what native plants are. That many native plants grow taller than a foot and they're being incorporated into a variety of properties, rain gardens, all kinds of things, and they serve a purpose there. So who determines, who makes that determination? A lot of people don't even know what they are, you know, they'll look at it as a weed, so who's going to, how does that work with this particular ordinance?
With that said, you know, if there's a questionable situation, obviously dialogue with the property owner is important. Because the last thing you want to do is tell somebody to cut down that type of thing set up, and they're going to say, well, no, because this is what it's for. And, you know, that is understandable, so, you know, your common poison ivy, dandelions, Canadian thistle, you know, those are your common weeds you see around here. More so than, you know, some things that you're talking about. If there's ever a question, there will be research done beforehand. I mean, most of the properties that I've got now is basically grass. You know, it's grass, thistle, things like of that nature. Whereas, you know, I've come across something that kind of looked a little different, you know, there would be dialogue, obviously, with the property.
Okay, and then hopefully some type of education or something for the person who registered the complaint. Okay, my my final comment has to do with invasive species, invasive vines, trees, this type of thing. And I'm, I'm thinking you're aware of this, and sometimes a homeowner will go and they will try to rectify that problem. But with invasives, depending on how you do it, it may not look good for quite a while until you're able to really work on that and get rid of the right. So there, there's, there's some kind of workability.
Yeah, so there's dialogue, there's dialogue, and and honestly, it's not uncommon for me to call the people back and complain and just say then, hey, I spoke to the property owner. This is the plan of the pack, this is the situation there. I find that communication is, you know, very important, you know, in a lot of things, but I feel that that is between parties, you know, it has to be done. Because there's always something that could be coming.
Sure, okay, well, I appreciate that, I know I do dialogue in my neighborhood. There are people, you know, in the neighborhood who ask questions for others, and we're always teaching and doing that, but I just think we have other folks as well, so I appreciate it, okay, thanks.
You can be my expert then on invasive plants and.
Give me. Give me a call, we'll give it to the number.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Come on. One quick question, I think you also said about the rules regarding the removal of political signs with forty five days of election.
They can be for forty five, eighty five, two.
Right, to an.
Ten days.
If that's only limited to the political, for the electoral run for elections, what if somebody has a sign that's not elections related, but it is a political sign? What about that?
There's not a free, a person that.
That, I think I could give that, so this.
It's all private property.
Okay.
There's not much.
Okay.
Are there any other questions from the audience? Ordinance. All right, I have one more question, you mentioned the board of. Building booth, you currently have, we use this ordinance to change that, this will go to.
This is a person.
One person.
This is the person that's made it.
Does it mean? So it's a single person on the board, is there a reason why we're moving away from a board?
These types of complaints are four, five, seven, four, coming in as a. You want to hit on that. You want to expedite the thing, the appeal process, the person who works with the person to have the option of holding, producing or getting rid of the ticket. Well, the option there with one person. One, just for another thing, there was a little research I did do with, I think, like I said, the other day, with their community economic development page. And we talked about what ordinance is in international filings, so it's a many programs, rental licensing, data property registration, so the word does get out that. These programs are very popular on the area of these four, so it's something to, for the consideration.
Thank you for your hard work on this, you know, there are many, many months in the making, we appreciate all of that. So at this point, we do have the opportunity for a motion to advertise the ordinance as explained. It would be our quality of life improvement ordinance.
I would like to make the motion. A little bit. To give a notice to the first time in twenty four hour.
Well, they just.
Twenty four is. But that's for the first time, first.
Correct the problem within twenty four hours.
I'm sorry, to correct the problem twenty four hours or to give a notice twenty four hours before the ticket can be issued, in the twenty four hours.
Correct.
So.
But they have to be on time.
Hold on, hold on, so here's the scenario, like I said, I get a high rate, it's medium point. I can't tell you now, it almost takes five to eight days for a letter to get brought around. So right there, it passed the twenty four hours, so did you see that the letter, which we probably wouldn't know, and then it gave them all twenty four hours. You know, I mean, normally we usually get seven to ten days, etc. So I'm just, I'm just pointing out, I mean.
I just, you know, I'm uncomfortable with. Person get getting ticket without knowing that it's a violation. But that's, that's, I'm not, I'd like that person, whoever it is, be aware of it. But that's, that's, I'm not comfortable, like that person, whoever it is, be aware of it.
Well, that's, I'm thinking of what I brought up earlier under section two fifty ten enforcement and section B. Any violation of the provisions of this ordinance may be caused at the discretion of the issuing officer. Issue a warning, a notice, a violation, ticket, or citation. So it's really subjective there. And I think, where it can come from, you're asking for the same thing that I was talking about, that we would have to be able to at least notify them, you know, a warning before we go to, again, some citations.
Correct, but again, I'm talking about first time violation. Not for each violation, but for five, five days.
Well, I would say probably talk, given that it's the first, I'll have this one, definitely see what you know, your next year, go right down. We, and we need people probably for next year, but the best, there are some, well, maybe better, who might ask.
Correct.
Who will go right with it.
I mean, for the most part, writing a notice, that's a big help. It's just the prime line, maybe giving the person the correct issue. So depending on what you're going at, going after in the ordinance at violation, will dictate the prime line. Like, John, do you have, will you be able to make eight, two, three weeks that they get along their property? Which is kind of exact, exactly. So that's, and I think there are specific states in your twenty-four hours, especially on your property, your private property. So there are, there are different time lines. There will be more. But in a general, twenty-four hours, I don't, personally, I don't know, experience how that issue will with the mail situation, plus, you know, trying to figure out, person actually received or everyone might.
So like what you're suggesting is, it's not possible to keep it there?
Well, you can, you can. A warning is possible, I mean, there's, there's instances now, or comes out July, first time, that's coming. But that's a lot.
And that's what he's talking about, that what we did in the process, we did, more than, today, which is. So, because this is a new ordinance, and it's going to be an educational process for our residents to understand. The first year of it is almost all educational, so I would imagine that there'll be an educational piece to it. And the majority of things will be warnings, unless it's like a constant repeat offender type situation.
Well, it's really, it's ridiculous that, you know, the people, the person here, I mean, they're not, you know, you know, whole yard is filled with. You know, a warning, much advice, well, you know, maybe that, maybe or.
I didn't give a person a warning or a, here at all, that each, you have to follow, whatever arrangement is you have, whether it is a correct. Who they is, to me, they is a B. But the one shouldn't be there, it should be there as a person, no, some people.
I mean, I think, probably what you're saying, which you said, is that it is a provision under two fifty ten B. It is obviously addressed at the discretion of the officer, but I think it's maybe a procedural standard operating procedure.
So I'd like to see this line just changed, instead of adding on with an SOP, that the ordinance itself speaks to that as, as part of the provisions.
A core point where, was there a motion on the floor?
Yeah, we've, we've got, we've got one right now. You, you had put a motion on the floor, this, early, and we had, well, a couple of times, and we think that. Then you put another motion on the floor, so we're still on the motion. So, but I, I should, just real quick, if, I have, I think the standard operating procedure makes a lot of sense. I think that, that's a great idea. But to incorporate it into the ordinance, I think, might not be so smart, because over time, what we do initially with the education piece is going to change. I mean, it's, we're not going to constantly have the education piece in the beginning. So I'm wondering if that should be a separate document in and of itself on how, because we didn't do incorporate that same line into the noise one, into the noise ordinance, the, the standard operating.
Oh, oh, gee.
Right, I'm talking about the standard operating.
Oh, oh, sorry.
So I think that's a great idea, I like that, because I think that brings clarity, like, you know, Keisha had a question, and Commissioner Kelly, and Commissioner Sutton. But I think that should be a standalone, because we want flexibility in how you, you're going to have to break that up. We don't have one specific, we're always.
I think, to events of the final, that SOP or U in-house type of procedure doesn't follow into the ordinance that I'm aware of. I follow the corporate standard operating procedure sort of style.
Attorney, do you agree, disagree, guidelines, thoughts?
I, I definitely agree with what Tom just said. And keep in mind also, that this particular ordinance as a vision is ratcheting down the level of township, I'll say authority or severity in dealing with residents. So the concern we have here about notices and things we're talking about is already ratcheted down compared to the alternatives that are available today that are out there in this ordinance. I would just venture to say that when Tom is dealing with a particular situation, giving a warning, giving a notice or not, with the discretion that's here. One of the things, to quote, quote, quote in his thought process, is, is this first offender is looking to try and comply? Or is this the fifth time now to see this person in the last ten days? I think that plays into how you react.
Right.
And, uh, who should?
So we have, we, we had originally a motion, Commissioner, I'll answer your question. Commissioner Wong had a motion on the floor to advertise as described. So we have to act on that particular motion first. So we have a motion on, on the floor. I, I would second that motion with the addition not to change that ordinance, but to add an internal SOP to answer some of those questions on procedurally how it would handle. That would not be part, actually, that should be the order, that should be separate, because it's not part of the ordinance. But I do believe we should have an internal SOP on that.
Which would be standard.
Right. Which is standard.
Which would be standard.
So I, I second Commissioner Wong's recommendation to advertise as. Commissioner Wong.
My comment was, that was not for you. So, if you say it again, the motion is to advertise.
As advertised.
As is, and your, your recommendation is to address these issues that have been raised by several parties. That will be a separate standard operating.
Correct, which Tom said they already do anyways, but it's not part of the ordinance. And it wouldn't be impossible then if this goes to the magistrate. But we don't normally put SOPs in, in that ordinance anyway, so.
All right, I agree. I believe it.
Commissioner Wong.
Yes.
Commissioner Sutton.
Yeah, this ordinance is very important, necessary. I couldn't trust the new, the marker, they couldn't care about something.
Commissioner Kelly. I'm going to vote no, because I was going to make a motion to remove the political signs section, because I don't feel like that's something that tends to dip our toe into. I appreciate the work that you've done in this, but I also have a concern that we're not scanning out more carefully, leading everything to the discretion of the officer. On reflection, I knew it's long-term, that I feel it has some structure in here. Just first provide a warning before we go to violations and citations. Commissioner Morgan, yes, motion carries, and we'll go back to Tom very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next this evening, we have a variety of resolutions for consideration and possible adoption this evening. The first is a resolution appointing Mark S. Capuccio, Easburn, and Gray as the additional alternate township solicitor for the township of Southwood. Now, do you want to elaborate on this? Yeah, this is a resolution, we've come into an unusual situation of both of our solicitors being conflicted on a matter. So we would be engaging Mr. Capuccio, Easburn, and Gray for a specified, specified project, which is really to do with a water easement for rich farm development. So again, it's a limited scope engagement, but both of our, our township solicitor and all township solicitor are both conflicted. Dave Manhard, if you want to add anything additional about Mr. Capuccio?
So just, Mr. Capuccio kind of is in some of the planning circles with Lower Milford. And he's a solicitor at Lower Milford, did some work with Laura McConaughey, and I know him from some of the planning circles. So he was recommended from there.
And again, they didn't do a conflict check, and neither of, neither, they would not be conflicted out on parties that are involved with easement. Any questions from the board on this particular resolution? I have a question, so this, is there a distinction between a special counsel and an alternate solicitor? Or are they considered one and the same? I would, so if they're not, as it says.
I don't know if there's necessarily a definition of special counsel as contrasted with alternate township solicitor. And I guess throw a third term in there, and that would be conflict solicitor. I was pointing at a purple here. I usually see the term special counsel, who wins, attorney, who has specialty, is maybe not available from the regular solicitor. For example, the collective bargaining agreements in the labor council. Township uses Edgar Sevens for that capability. My office does not handle collective bargaining agreements, so Edgar Sevens is special counsel. So with that explanation, I take no issue with the phraseology here, although it's not necessarily the only phrase.
Well, the reason I'm asking is, the resolution before us is for a two-year term ending December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three, or until this is pointed. But I know the first class township code was updated at the end of last year, and under section twelve oh one, it eliminates two-year term of solicitor, provides solicitors serve at the pleasure of the board. And also, special counsel may be appointed as needed for a specific met. So we're looking for this specific issue that's come up with an easement. I, I guess I'm questioning why we're going to appoint a third solicitor and not just use Mr. Capuccio under the provision of the code of section twelve oh one as special counsel.
I guess I would just weigh in, having a little thought about this until the question was raised. But if the board were to enact this resolution in this unusual situation where my office is conflicted out and Rockwell DeVito is conflicted out, then this board has already acted to appoint someone who can be called by the township manager and say, we need to help us, as opposed to the formality of coming back.
Thank you, I guess finally, follow-up to that would be January, the first meeting Monday in January following an election is a reorganization meeting for the township. So for appointing a solicitor now to go beyond that two years, would that be up in January for review? Or would that supersede the first class township code reorganization?
Well, it would not supersede the first class township code. I think if you enact this, it would give the township manager your ability to contact Mr. Capuccio during the timeframe under the resolution, should the need arise. But if you decide two months from now, you want a different conflict special or alternative, instead of Capuccio.
Okay. And I just had a, just a general question, I guess, for the township manager. How many solicitors did they interview, and why was this one, particular one chosen? I don't have any information, because I think that they just elaborated, we were in the need, a lot of solicitors in the valley would use that it out based on the parties that are involved. And again, it made sense to appoint somebody who would run a conflict check. And the ordinance also, I'm sorry, the resolution also includes the letter, the, excuse me, that this solicitor reserves the right to request a retainer in the future. Is that something that we typically have written in our solicitors' filings? We don't, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I, I'll come back to, come back to what Commissioner Kelly said. That's where I heard the answers. What is the term of this appointment or?
Termined on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, or until a successor has been appointed. So it can be terminated at any time, as the legislature wants to.
Does the business, they're being engaged for a specific easement.
If this need arises for this engagement with the builder again, then you have somebody who is not conflicted, and so who can handle the conflict.
Okay. Why was that term chosen as opposed to a term that ends up the end of this year?
It's, it's our standard, we have a two-year appointment on the resolution again, as or until a successor has been appointed. They can appoint this, the order that, see the board to appoint a successor if they would like to do that.
Okay, and I'm, I didn't hear, how many solicitors did we?
We did not interview any additional solicitors who are aware of solicitors who are conflicted based on the parties involved.
Okay, I hear.
If I could just add, it was also, there was a bit of a time crunch there. So it was looking for somebody pretty much outside of the valley that isn't conflicted. So it was, again, we had kind of a time issue, so we didn't have a whole lot of time to interview multiple attorneys.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? And yeah, I, I should, you'll let me know if there's any questions.
Definitely.
All right, I just have one more question, sorry. So since this is a water easement, the developer will be responsible for, please involve members. So we have a resolution in front of us, so I hear a motion to appoint R. S. Capuccio, Easburn, and Gray for additional alternate townships. Motion on the floor from Commissioner Sutton, with your second, second motion, Commissioner Kelly, can I have a roll call, please? Commissioner Wong.
Yes.
Commissioner Wong.
Yes.
Commissioner Sutton.
Yes.
Commissioner Wong. I, yes, motion carries. Thank you, everybody. All right, next for consideration this evening, we have in front of us, we, the whole board did interviews for, well, we have two resolutions for consideration, interviews for the civil service commission, and also for the board. The first in front of us this evening is a resolution for consideration of an alternate member to the Southwood All Township Civil Service Commission. We only had one interview, and that was with Michael, Mr. Vinnie Quinn, who. We only had one interview for that with a local, Mr. Vinnie Quinn, who has a willingness to serve on the civil service commission. So with that being said, are there any questions or comments for a motion on table to appoint Mr. Vinnie Quinn as an alternate member to the Southway Hall Township Civil Service Commission? I have a general question. This resolution has the appointment terminating in 2027, so it's a six-year term. I'm just not familiar. Are all of the members of the civil service commission on six-year terms? Yes, yes, sorry, there is credit comment. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the top?
I have a question, a general one. Are the alternate members, do they have a different term than the regular members? No, it's the same.
Good thinking. All right. So we have a motion on the floor to appoint Mr. Vinnie Quinn as our alternate member to the Southway Hall Township Civil Service Commission. I make a motion, or I make a motion. Would you like to have a second? All right, we have a second from Commissioner Kelly. Can I have a roll call vote, please? Commissioner Wal.
Yes.
Commissioner Wal.
Yes.
Commissioner Seton. Commissioner Kelly. I, Commissioner Ward. Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Thank you to Mr. Quinn for stepping up and volunteering for that. That's fantastic. All right. Next this evening, like I had mentioned, we had done interviews with the whole board for our open commission on the planning commission. We interviewed three individuals that, well, actually, yes, three individuals that evening. So those individuals were Lynn Hanna, Lee Salt, and Mark Luth, and all of them fantastic interviews, wonderful people. So before we go ahead with a motion for consideration this evening, our very thoughts for comments, before we put a motion on the floor for consideration of appointing to our, thank you.
I have a comment. This board came up with a procedure that we used successfully for the vacant commissioner position, where we went in the order of roll call vote and we made recommendations. And then after that, we went in order of roll call vote and made motion. I propose that we use that same procedure.
Come on. Do you want to hand it back? He wants to follow the same procedure that we did when we considered appointing to the DOC position, where we, everybody gets to make a recommendation for planning board. You pick the candidate that you're recommending, and then you go back to the original person, and then they make a motion for consideration. Okay, I guess we'll have to get comments. There's something more to comment in the public. You want to go ahead, wait?
I enthusiastically endorsed Lee Salt as the best candidate to serve on the planning commission. Lee understands the planning commission purpose, and proof his active participation in almost all DOC and planning commission meetings during the last four years. He is uniquely qualified, make an immediate contribution. Lee has a vision that our community will go responsibly within township ordinances while maintaining a balance between development and preservation. He will ensure that the township has, and plan, better planning residential communities, smarter commercial development, and as much farmland and green space preservation as possible. He will like to see our already developed land-protected areas. He read it up before taking a new screen space. Lee has the critical skills to perform well. He's very pragmatic, intelligent, logical, independent, objective, and trustworthy. He's always very honest and respectful. He has the exact character and stability that we need on the planning commission. So I wholeheartedly endorse Lee Salt as the most qualified, independent, trustworthy candidate for the Southway Hall Township Planning Commission.
I will also nominate Lee Salt. I thank all three citizens who showed interest, came for an interview. In my opinion, Lee by far has the most knowledge, and he gained that knowledge by attending nearly every planning commission meeting, or at least the last four years. I know that because I was there with him as a president, and as now serving at the planning, he's at almost every meeting. It's not just that he's there. He's learned historically the arguments for and against many of the land developments that have come before us in the last four years. I still like his word. He's a critical thinker of the questions that he asks during courtesy of the floor. After much debate by the planning commission, typically, the question he asks has not been debated by our board. So the unique perspective that it brings, I feel, would be a perfect complement to the board. I know that that compiques what Bill and Mayor, who's showing the board, would recommend, Commissioner Morgan sent us the letter that, I'm sorry, forwarded us an email, that it spoken with Commissioner Morgan last night, and that you would be recommending Mark Luth. And I appreciate that, I respect your perspective. But I know, Bill, that you come over to planning from zoning. Mark already serves on the zoning board, and I asked him during his interview, because I was curious, the zoning hearing board is a quasi-judicial board. That means they have the right to make decisions that stick legally. They make binding decisions. And I asked him, why would you leave a board where you have the authority to make decisions and come to the planning commission, which is purely an advisory board? And he said, I don't, I think he said, I don't worry. I only know that his interest in planning was maybe speculative, and that's not a negative. It's just, Lee Salt has been four years of his own volition, showing up at meetings, and only a couple of years ago actually applied to begin planning. So those first two years, he was just soaking up information. That's my opinion. I want to thank Lynn, I'm on the road. I know that you didn't have a lot of background in there, but I appreciate your willingness, and I hope if you're not chosen to consider some other boards in township, because we do have other needs. So I'll wrap that up by saying, without my experience on the planning the last two years, I have to say that Lee has the most, to bring to the table and help our planning commission as we face, so Morgan broke your, I'm going to. I don't know if you already did, but my recommendation is Mr. Mark Luth, for the reasons that, of his experience on zoning, or many years of experience, and his knowledge of the rules and regulations surrounding the planning. Mark, I, this is probably the third time, I think I've done three interviews with all of them. Mark breaks to the table, and it's his experience and knowledge and passion. I believe that Lee also brings many qualities, and he has more to learn, and he'll learn that on zoning, and he'll bring great things to this township. And I have to say that Lynn Hanna, you were so impressive during your interview. I truly believe you have a place somewhere in this township, and certainly hope we can see more of you. My recommendation today would be Mr. Mark.
First, I want to thank the, and Lee Salt for the desire, both of you, people. Mark Luth is a principal of, basically, Mark Luth has been engaged, engineer, and he knows, he can help township, some of its, with all kinds of plans that were prepared for this. He knows, he knows, breaks up in the morning, deals with, also skip, deals with, he has the experience, he does, I think, oh.
Commissioner Wal.
First of all, just to make a comment, because we commented, Commissioner Kelly didn't know, he said, Mark, it's why you wanted to leave, don't even go to planning, that you were some kind of board. That was it. I was at the same age as Matt when he said, first of all, take one, two words out of context, it's completely inappropriate.
I am not taking anything out of context. I asked him a direct question, and that was his answer, and he laughed out, and it was a little bit funny. So you are up to make whatever comments you would like, but.
For someone who cares much about semantics, I think the way all is, is the answer looks in reference to the fact that he's looking for a change to switch out to a, you know, zoning, he's looking for a change. Do you make that comment?
Could you please expand on the semantics? Okay, let's just, let's just, Rob, excuse me, let me make an answer to Commissioner Wal's semantics comment. But you were going that I, we're not, I'm not going to have an argument here. Well, the physical one, I'm not, Commissioner Wal, for your, if you're ready.
Thank you. So we were, obviously, I present the chair in terms of having any sort of prepared speech, which I didn't, but I think what was said tonight, first, the candidates, each candidate, Lee Salt, and Hannah, and Mr. Luth were applying, and anybody willing to step forward, certain township should be a part, and you do, correct, step forward, so regardless, I encourage each person to continue their willingness to serve, you know, just keep knocking, and there will be another opportunity that comes up, regardless of what happens. But to me, in terms of experience, in terms of business acumen, in terms of what, this person would remain the table, I think we could search R and Y of the township to find qualified candidate, and we're going to be able to find one more qualified than this Mark Luth. And now we see qualified ones willing to serve, so that may be based on a wholeheartedly support, Mr. Luth, in this position.
Before we go to the motions, are there any questions or comments?
Dave Kennedy, 3727, Chestnut Hill Drive. I had the opportunity to sit in on those interviews, and I do want to thank the three people that showed up, just to volunteer to be on an advisory board is commendable in Southway Hall Township. But one of the things that I noticed during the interview, and I know the three candidates, I don't know, I don't know them at all, any of them, was that there was a lot of discussion about Mark Luth and his background in conflict if he came to planning, and would he have to recuse himself for certain things that would come up, either through a client that he may have, or his own firm that he may be involved with. So I guess I'm questioning, is the township putting themselves in a position where that may be a conflict of interest more often than not? Whereas, I don't know this young lady, I was in her interview, and Lee Salt, there was no conflict on either one of those. So I'm just questioning, why even pick an individual that could bring a problem to Southway Hall Township down the road, whereas the other two individuals, and Lee Salt was recommended, and I would not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark Luth. If he'd been, he would recuse himself, if he, I really think that he had so much qualification for his job, that he gives to the township, to pick him up, maybe as well. And if he'd been committed to recuse anyhow, then he would.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you. Commissioner Wal.
I make a motion to select Lee Salt for the position of, of our township planning commission member.
I'd second that motion.
I can interject, and I apologize for interrupting, since you did ask like that. Yeah, we're correct. It's actually a resolution that would be adopted by motion to appoint whomever, and I feel the board's advocate, have a formal resolution, just like for name. So my recommendation would be that any motion, be a motion to adopt this pre-cred resolution, obviously, the Lee Salt candidate would.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution before us, with Lee Salt included in that resolution to become a planning commission member.
I'd second the motion. Commissioner Wal.
Yes.
Commissioner Wal.
No.
Commissioner Seton.
No. I do think very highly of Lee Salt, personally, in this case, you have a better.
Commissioner Kelly. I, Commissioner Ward. No, I echo Commissioner Seton's comments, so the motion does not carry. Move on. I will also nominate Lee Salt, that motion did not pass. So that being said, I will make the motion to adopt the resolution appointing Mr. Mark Luth to the Southway Hall Township.
Let me see.
Commissioner Wal.
No. May I ask a question, please? Sorry.
Absolutely.
I was going to ask about the conflicts of both entities, but I didn't know if there were any conflicts. My question was going to be, do any of the three have any conflicts? But is that a conflict?
There's no, no conflict at this time. The question had come up, if ever something would come in front of him that he was personally involved in, I guess he would have to recuse himself, any one of us on any subject matter, because of the nature of the business, he's an engineer.
So he does not have any business relationships with any developer.
Not that we know of, at this given moment.
And no personal relationships.
I don't, I don't know. If he did, he'd have to recuse himself. Yes. I think I do it too. Okay, okay, yes.
I would, I'd like to make a comment regarding Dr. Hunt's question. I'm not saying this in conflict with what Commissioner Morgan said. I'd just like to clarify that I asked the question of whether Mr. Luth, through his liite engineering business, has clients who are property owners and/or land developers who do business in the township. The answer was yes.
Commissioner Wal, your vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Seton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
No.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Motion carries, appointing Mr. Mark Luth to the planning, and thank you to all of the candidates very, very much.
I'd like to make a comment. I've been a commissioner for 18 months now, and we've appointed a handful of people to boards, and I guess I'm a little bit, I'll use the word trouble, that we haven't appointed a single individual to a board that has not been either a former commissioner or has moved over from another board. And I know that we often talk about the vacancies, and we encourage people to apply, and I understand this is an individual process, and interviews now are on, and each commissioner needs to make their own decisions, but as a township that's encouraging our citizens to be involved in a local government, and I don't mean to single him out, but I personally have witnessed Lee Salt's commitment of his time before the planning commission and the board of commissioners over the last four years. It's just very unfortunate that we, but we appointed Lee Salt to. It's just very unfortunate that we, what we appointed Lee Saul to, to be zoning, and the reason we did is we said, go and be an alternate, it's easy to get onto another board from being on one. I think his initial interest was zoning, he never indicated that on his application, his heart has always been with planning, he's been attending for four years. And I just want to make a statement, I want to thank you, Lee, for your commitment, and I'm sorry you weren't.
Great. So next this evening, we have a resolution, this is quite exciting, I'll give you a little background for the next resolution for consideration this evening, so. We are pleased to announce that the Jarrett Corporation will be granting an easement to Southway Hall Township through Jarrett Property to allow the construction of an important portion of the Jordan Creek Greenway. The area of the easement is south of Parkland High School, and will allow about a quarter mile trail to be built from Ritter Road to Parkland Bridge Parkway. If anybody's not familiar, the Jarrett Corporation is a family-owned business founded in nineteen sixty-seven, and the Jarrett Corporation has about fourteen hundred acres of land in northern Southway Hall Township, and a small amount of adjoining land in Whitehall. The Jarrett Corporation has worked closely with Southway Hall and the Wildlands Conservancy on connecting the Jordan Creek Greenway with, through several parcels of its property for the past ten years. This easement tonight, and the Jarrett's earlier work with the township and Wildlands, will make it easier and safer to access the greenway from the Parkland High School, and make the trail an even better asset to Southway Hall Township's residents and business. The easement will allow the contours of the Jordan Creek, and will offer trail users the sights and sounds of one of the township's greatest natural treasures. Jarrett Corporation has a long legacy of supporting projects that embrace the history, culture, and quality of life of the township. We are looking forward, hopefully, to, or continue work with Jarrett and the Wildlands and the school district on future agreements to further enhance, which is really good. So in front of us this evening for consideration and possible action, we have a resolution of the board of commissioners of Southway Hall Township authorizing the execution of a pre-cred agreement with the Jarrett Corporation, providing for the granting of a perpetual trail easement over lands of Jarrett Corporation along the Jordan Creek, and further providing for the payment of consideration thereof. Would be a good mention.
Thank you, can I just say, just one question? Commissioner, the, you, you had a document there you were reading from, were you reading from the resolution?
No.
Okay, so these were interactive.
That was a background from your background.
Okay.
I just read you the resolution.
Thank you.
You got it.
Okay. Thank you very much, so, good evening, Commissioner, so then you have a second opportunity to address the.
Yeah, Mike, I mean.
Mike? Is that there?
No, it wasn't.
About that?
Oh, it's.
Sorry about that. So we do have an exciting opportunity in front of us, the next progress of the development of the Jordan Creek Greenway. As you may know, we are already awaiting a permit for construction of the trail to the Cover Bridge Park, and have already secured a new name for finding a family just east, sorry, on a flat road. This is the next property over to continue to pave the way for the future direction of this trail. The Jarrett Corporation has been absolutely phenomenal to work with. Is that better?
No.
I've done it. All right, thank you. Um, yeah, the Jarrett Corporation has been an absolute pleasure to work with, they have all been very comprehensive easement. That's fair for both sides. I wanted to take a moment to go over some of the highlights of the easement, so everybody understands what's in this easement. So the trail easement will permit the construction of a ten-foot-wide paved trail, signage, vegetation, landscaping, and fencing, gates, and barriers with full access. A removal and lock collar will be installed at the entrance of the trail, along Ritter Road, to prevent any unauthorized motorized vehicles from entering the trail. The easement also provides the opportunity for benches, picnic tables, waste baskets, and bicycle racks for descent. And permitted uses of the trail include walking, biking, jogging, biking, bird watching, nature studies, power-driven mobility devices for use by persons who have mobility impairments, and of course, emergency vehicles, who may ever have an emergency on the trail that needs assistance. And also with great consent, the easement also permits charity runs, competitive races, programmatic use by the schools, clubs, and any other groups, as well as picnicking and other, other stationary activities. So tonight, we are respectfully requesting that the board votes in favor of the resolution in front of us, which permits the township to enter into a trail easement agreement with the Jarrett Corporation for further development, uh, for further the development of the Jordan Creek Greenway, and are asking for consideration of ten dollars for this.
Thank you, Randy, I'd like to also note, I think this is very important, you know, Jarrett creates a lot of, the corporation creates a lot of history in the township. They're continuing to evaluate ways to preserve and reuse many of the historical houses and barns that are right along the trail, and anybody's been on it. And continue to preserve that history as best they can, dates back to the early seventeen hundreds, and to kind of also talk a little bit about history. In fact, the township building you're in right now, the archways that are right out front, they were designed to reflect the architectural design of the barns right off of Minicore, so it's all part of the Jarrett Corporation, so they bring a lot of history, so we're very fortunate to have them so interested in preserving that. Are there any questions or comments from the board on this particular, um, resolution this evening?
Yeah, just a, a quick one, Randy, I, I apologize, I don't know exactly where this is, is there some familiar landmark part of this?
So the, the area in blue, Commissioner Walk, is the Jarrett parcel we're talking about tonight, it's thirty-seven acre track. The easement area is highlighted in blue, the greenway itself is the green line going through. Once it crosses outside that blue shaded area, that's actually Ritter Road, so there would be an on-road crossing right there. And then we're currently working with the school district on another easement, to traverse the Jordan Creek Greenway up through their property, Cedar Crest Boulevard.
So Parkland High School is just the blue area?
Um, it would be south. You know, east of that area?
Yeah.
Or, sorry, I'm trying to remember, is that the whole area, especially, yeah, it's, it's north, or east of that.
Right.
In fact, I think you can see there, uh, there's two streets, like, right there on the very lower right, right there, right?
This is, this is truly a tremendous addition to the Jordan Greenway, opening up opportunities for the connection to the school and, and blockability, which is the concept that you're strongly pushing.
Across the, we decided to, actually down the Cover Bridge Bar. Environmental groups obviously have been on safe access, of course, created for any environmental studies that they wish to do. So it's kind of open up new opportunities, new funding sources, you know, school opens up safe access, schools.
Well, I think we're very fortunate to have that, that forward thinking by the Jarrett Corporation, who wants to continue to be a part of, of the industry of the township, and positive.
Stanley, I have a question, how long is this proposed trail section that's, I know you said it's thirty-seven acres, but from one end to the other in this easement, how, how far are you estimating that that is?
I believe this area in particular is point three or point four miles.
Okay. About half of what we.
Yeah. Bordering that, correct.
And I have one other follow-up question, sort of related, um, I think about a year ago, I was at a park and rally meeting, and there was discussion about breaking the greenway, about River Road, and there's a park there that you're going to have to share the road.
Right.
So I was a little bit concerned when I heard that, because River Road is heavy and windy and difficult sometimes for two cars to go by, and if we're going to be taking the runners and bikers and whatnot, um, from the high school or whatever, and we're going to be sharing that road, has there been any consideration given to find a way to make that not share the road, I mean, that's a concern going forward, the busier the greenway gets, I mean, more bikes and kids, and.
Yeah, it's, it's a very, very short section, referencing right there is where the creek actually bends at River Road, side road there. There, there's very limited options, we did make that a very important topic when we worked with the engineers on the side of the park. So there, there's very few solutions for that area, other than crossing the road, and crossing the road again to get back to Parkside. Two road crossings, probably not ideal, you know, when we spoke with our engineers, as well as the property owners are really in favor of that. The other option would actually be to create some sort of extension of the bank. We'd do this, we'd be taking down a ton of trees, almost build in a wall and create, support additional road space, so that we could actually create a wider road path there. It's, it's a bit tricky, and we'll get there, so it's, it's something we'll continue to look at, but in terms of the back section, around the easiest fastest possible solution. I'd say this was, was proper science, which is, we proposed that, that section. That, that's the route we decided to.
Thank you.
I, I have one more question, which you referred previously. So every time you were, might make a presentation like this, I always say, well, it's nice to see a piece of the action, I'd like to see the new Southway Hall Township Park and Astro Plan, and I know it's a work in progress, thank you for sending me previous one. And the update on, progress on that Astro Plan?
Not so much on the comprehensive plan, update for the park's operation trails, open space plan that we're, we're budgeted for, we're going to bid for this year. We are waiting for the complete, uh, details of that, so we're not doing duplicate work. We want to be able to save us for the township, to make sure that, you know, the data we are already collecting, same time, so. The benefit of waiting for the complete plan is we're going to pay that in cash, or go out to bid, or, or, or be, this is like, all of that, that's with that. Yeah, all right, thanks.
Any other questions?
No question, just, just a brief comment, you know, I think it's pretty cool that we get to be talking about things like this, I, I had, I grew up, just on the Parkland High School, I'm very familiar with where this is at. So just a comment to say, I can go to day part in some of these conversations, and I can go for this, future opportunity here, and excited to see, see it happen.
Any questions? They, they have a plan there, did?
So I could promptly make a motion, we move forward with the, the resolution for authorizing the execution of a trail easement agreement with Jarrett Corporation, providing for the granting of a perpetual trail easement over lands of Jarrett Corporation along the Jordan Creek Creek, and further providing for the payment of consideration thereof. And we have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Morgan, a second from Commissioner Long, right there. Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner, second?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins? I. Commissioner Morgan? Yes. Huge, huge thanking everybody involved, and huge thanking to the Jarrett Corporation. Is it ten dollar, we may be making that installment, so I don't know where.
Sure, so the next process here is, obviously, we'll be saying, sure, if they're paying in order, I can then we'll make sure to swear up to the Jarrett Corporation.
Excellent, thank you so much, and, and a thank you to the school district as well. Excellent. Great, thanks, all right. So next this evening for consideration and possible action, we have a resolution granting a waiver of certain provisions and approval requirements of Southway Hall Township subdivision and land development ordinance for a planning rule sixteen forty-five, Whitehall Avenue, Woodlong Fire Company, if, so, a press gentleman in the background too, so I'm, I'm sure they have some comments and thoughts.
So I'm just going to do a brief pitch of action.
Great, thank you.
To represent that. So the applications to currently develop property located, located at six thousand fifty-one Whitehall Avenue, and throws a eight hundred and sixty-eight square foot support at the rear of the current fire station. Property is point six two acres, and zone R five. Woodlong Fire Company is the owner of that. Previous township consideration, it was at the zoning hearing board in April, and granted setback variances, as well as variances, a variance toward the buffer strip between residential property and plaza. There are several deferrals related to the community development department. Typically, the deferrals are frontage improvements, and it's been a practice of the planning commission to promote improvements, the sidewalks curbing, street trees until such time as further development. They're also asking for a waiver from Southway, section pertaining to open space sanitation. We feel the department recommends approval, because it's a relatively small improvement to the property. With that, we'll hand it over to.
Yeah.
Good, uh, good evening, I'm Snatch and Paradise and Associates, I don't have too much more to add, it is a very small project, small garage for the new vehicles are existing, stationed on the whole avenue. This is a project that is so small, we are approximately, we're in the process. I'll just add that, even though it's a somewhat way of, so we really buy the. Of course, despite these comments, it was a very search fire tree. So, any of this building? The, uh, the building for the property is a basically a park floor. And we have two vehicles out back, one is a park floor vehicle, we have fourteen park floors. And during the weather that, especially in the winter, they're out there scraping and trying to make the vehicle clean off, and we just want to place it. And the other is a utility vehicle, which is used to offer all the, the gently, and again, just trying to get it out of the weather. Keep it from deteriorating. Basically, uh, it's the only place we had to put it, and it, uh, it gets, I don't know, if you have any questions, because it was, it's kind of, that drive. I will say, uh, the Greg and Laura and Captain Yaw, who come down, sort of very refreshing to me, and, and, and everything they've done for us, and helped us through the process, along their journey down the road.
Thanks, Steve. And any questions, Greg has put through the project on the floor?
I just have a simple question, sort of this resolution states that all costs and expenses of the township, engineers, those that are consultants, are the responsibility of the applicant. Is that a great deal of, of these that we're looking at for this project? I guess my question is, since we have a fire tax that we collect to, for the fire companies, since we're they're building a garage to house their vehicles to prolong their life and make things better for the co-tears, is there a way that, that we waive that so that they're not paying back money that we give them in the fire tax? Is there a way to do this?
Remain, remain, I'm sorry, remain.
So. I'm sorry, I misunderstood, so it's number five, all costs and expenses, including the law leader's responsibility to help with that? Is that not?
We pay, we pay not out of our, our fire company, not out of the fire tax, not out of our money, we pay for the, uh, we pay for their services out of, out of loan, money, because it's not the fire. So, and the other thing we're doing, uh, trying to be one. So, and the other thing we're doing, trying to, I guess, be thoughtful, the fact that is, we're doing all the concrete. We're gonna, we're gonna buy a concrete, obviously, but we're gonna do all the concrete work. Instead of bringing the firm. You know, we're trying to keep the cost down. Several, very.
Any other questions from the board? From the public?
Yeah, I'm just curious, Barry, as a township president, how much do you expect that the project will cost? Your, your firework?
More than original, we'll, we'll call it.
Sure. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, we started this in August and to be honest with you, the amount of, just concrete right now has gone through the roof. So again, we, we, we have approval to our, to the, what, what project is, would I say?
We have a real man with a concrete one.
Yeah, it was a concrete.
Right.
But not the.
Right, you should have, you know.
Yeah.
Well, I guess my question is, I mean, since we have a fire tax within the township, I requested a right to know some time ago and I got the information, there's money in, fund, and your volunteer department for the fire.
Some of the, some of the cost or some of the engineering that we're trying to.
So why don't the township want to pick that portion? I guess I'm just asking, we're, we're. The township could make a.
We're just having to get this done.
Well, you shouldn't upset it, I mean, you say we should be paying for that as a township. And we're paying fire tax, there's money in those funds, and you guys are volunteers and we all respect what you guys do. I'm just sure you have all four departments. So why wouldn't, why wouldn't the township pay for that stuff?
It is, it is a capital project. It is, it is, it's a capital project. It is a capital project in which we are going to receive money to, you know, for the show and itself and the concrete. But we have chosen to do the concrete work ourselves, you know, cuts cost. But there's other things that the engineering, I mean, I'll be honest with you. There's no way that I ever thought putting cardboard up would be twenty pages of the. I just couldn't, couldn't imagine it, but we worked through it, we got through it, and like I said, Lauren, Greg, just absolutely from the township helping us to get through. You know, it's, it's been, it's been since August that we've been working on this. So the fees and everything apart from the capital project, that, that will, the cardboard is public, the concrete is public. It's the other fees that we, and some of the fees have to waive, but some of the fees you can't waive, the township can't.
Well, we can't wait for the fee to the third party.
Right, third party, right.
To make a bad horse.
Well, oh, yeah.
So, I mean, we, I can't tell Barry I didn't have to charge the fire crew, so we get billed, we just provide them in a monthly it's back to us, so I just can't wait with third party student.
That's correct. Can I just make sure I understand correctly, so like, I guess this is, to remain, Barry, would you please confirm the township is paying for a portion of this project in accordance with the provisions of the fire tax?
Absolutely. It's a capital project and we applied for it last year. Actually, this is a project that's been on hold.
Okay.
It was a 2020 project.
This is, yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah, concrete is a solid piece of the project. Are there any, any other questions from the public? Anybody have anything to?
Mr. George, I was just gonna ask a question, I'm looking at some concrete work done, is either guys available? I'm serious.
So I'd like to make a motion granting a waiver a certain review and approval requirements of the Southway Township subdivision and land development ordinance for a plan entitled 1645 Whitehall Avenue, Woodlong Fire Company. So I'll show them for Commissioner Morgan, why do you have a second? We have a rule over there. We have a second by Commissioner Wall, can I have a call? Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Sutton? Commissioner Collins? Yes, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right, next this evening for consideration and possible action, we have a resolution granting a waiver of certain review and approval requirements of the Southway Township subdivision and development ordinance for a plan entitled Parkway Manor Elementary School drop off. This is a new.
I will be right there.
Mr. Mannor is gonna start out.
So again, I'll just do a brief introduction and then hand it over to the applicant. This is the application to improve the property located at 768 Parkway Grove. Parkway, Parkway Manor Elementary School driveway improvements. The application was at, is a driveway pickup drop off location associated with smaller management facilities on a 20, roughly 28th property. And it's known hardcore medium residential. There's a series of comments as well as waivers and deferrals. Again, some of those waivers and some of those deferrals are related to frontage improvements. There's multiple frontages on the property, pretty big property. So the deferrals relate to areas that aren't being improved. Also, the new development department does recommend a two level plan. That will mainly go with the applicant.
You're probably have to use the mic, this, yeah, you have to hold it pretty close.
I don't think it's on.
How's that? All right, there we go.
Okay, good evening, I'm Scott, I started seeing something called engineers. An engineer, a client engineer for the, for the client party. Scrambled data capital from Parkland School District. And look, if I could, whoever's playing this, if you could be so kind to go to the existing features.
Hold your mic up close.
That's better. Excellent. So anyways, I thought what I would do is just start off, I'll be many, you know, very familiar with the project. However, for the benefit of those, as a refreshment of those perhaps annoying and getting a little bit, I wanted to just talk a little bit about the motivation very briefly for the project. As you can see on the, on the screen, on the existing Parkway Manor drop off pickup area, of course, you're shaking. There's a shady area, I don't want to talk very low. And right now, the, not right, now it's summertime, but prior to COVID when school conditions were, were normal, the issue is the traffic congestion, people trying to turn in off of to drop off pickup area, stacking of vehicles isn't there. So there were a few vehicles still out on Parkway Road, sometimes, especially during the PM pickup time, was blocked in both directions, both directions of Parkway Road, just, just the best. So in light of that, the, we'll get into the process, the homes and concept plans, see what can be done about it. We battled around a few ideas and if you don't mind, please go for a site plan. We came up with the plan before you, which in this kind of, so it's two main benefits. One is by extending and making it a new driveway, eliminating the current driveway access points to Parkway Road and a new driveway across from Hampshire Court. Very simply put, the stacking of cars can now occur on the school district property and not on the roadway. I think at the worst case, they kind of definitely thirty-one vehicles were queued up for that way on Parkway Road. So we, we tried to more or less size that storage length to accommodate those, plus or minus the car to, to store the vehicles that would otherwise be on Parkway Road. And the other, the other benefit to getting the queue of congestion of traffic off of Parkway Road is it aligns the driveway with Hampshire Court. As a traffic engineer, I also do that. It's always good to, you know, for operational benefits to traffic to have driveway to align. So it's the kind of twofold benefit to the project. Obviously, with that comes, you know, site development, grading, small order management, which is where our plan is tempted to address. Also, I just want to mention the timeline, that the Roger Oppsen School, school is approaching and the goal is to get at least the vast majority of this work, possibly, you know, all of it done, arts of school starting in fall. And so that's, that's really driving the timeline in the, in the process. Currently, with, we are receipt of the package of information that we gathered. We received a township commissioner review letter, looked through, reviewed the various manuals from the other committees that include the plan. We are in agreement and can have no issues by just blanketly saying we'll comply with all the comments in the letters. We also have our WPC consistency letter with respect to both land development and also smaller management. We have, we've communicated, we have a NDS permit associated with the project. We had received notification from the conservation district that all of our practical comments were addressed, although we're just awaiting the issue to the permit, which we expect very soon. Now with that said, there are a number of waivers and deferrals associated with the project and I just ask for the distraction of the board here, if you'd like me to go through the one, unless there's any question on the general one, that is so far. If you go through the one at a time, perhaps not some of the four, or you just get the highlights at your distraction.
I'm, I'm okay with highlights.
I'm okay with highlights. I asked you to highlight anything related to the traffic on Parkway Road, if, if there is anything.
Sure, with regards to the waivers and.
Yeah, if there's any waiver that has any interaction with traffic on Parkway Road or any implications like that.
Not, I guess, the storage is not really, it's, it's, this proposed revenue development. Traffic is, I think, it's got a situation here, there are waivers and deferrals that have been filed earlier related to we are referring the dedication right way in roadway Parkway. There is no, no change to that condition, only improving the situation. I can pull it out, but I really don't think there's any negative from this project launch. That would require a waiver as well.
On the topic of traffic, the exit driveway, is that gonna be held up left and right currently?
For what, for all access?
So, I mean, there's thirty-one bars or so stacking on Parkway, is that pretty common you're expecting to fit in, in your driveway?
Approximately, yeah.
Approximately, so. I guess I'm just curious if someone is exiting and needing to turn left and that road can get pretty busy right there. It could potentially hold up and back up in that mood. Was there any consideration given to do a right turn up only to keep the free flow of traffic there?
Well, no, I feel that was necessary, we didn't feel that was necessary, as you say, because if you think of the operation of the drop off, of the pickup time, that the cars are gonna come in quicker than they're gonna go out, so the time that the parent, the loads they can end and things like that, there's a certain amount of time associated with that. So that kind of mirrors the broad fact that both the drop off pickup area, well, in this case, it would be a pickup more likely. And so, you know, we didn't feel that that was necessary.
Thanks. So where, just trying to position myself, so the island right now, show me on the map, like, where, what's changing? Where, where do the cars queue now on the farm?
Can I just comment in screen? Okay. Do you want me to go back to existing conditions? Sure, that would be helpful, we'd be glad to propose. I think it's down.
By the way, this is gonna be a huge improvement, I mean, and, and should you go down there when school's letting out and the, the cars are aligned all the way back?
All right, so currently, some cars trying to make a left into there, and right now, there's a very limited area and it's actually relatively narrow, both, you know, parents are dropping off, picking up, results from a queue of vehicles backing up to here, and then obviously that blocks the entrance to the driveway from vehicles, you know, making left or right. And then, and Dave can speak more from a personal experience and his standness with regards to, you know, someone, there's a conflict point right here where this person has no place to go and perhaps he to get in there and he can't and he blocks the traffic this way and it just ends up being a gridlock situation. So with the near driveway, you could take, look at that. You know, the cars can stack up on this entire area, all the way around, and we purposely extended it in this area just for the pure purpose, one of the preliminary plans to actually have this circling around here, but we extended it just to provide additional storage capacity into that area. So that greatly reduces or greatly, I mean, you can never, could I ever say it would never happen, I can't stand here and say that, but the potential for that happening is greatly reduced, the likelihood of any conflicts at this location due to the, the stacking of vehicles is greatly reduced as a result of the project.
Thank you.
Just to quickly, as far as I'm concerned, anything there, definitely, but I've been just a quick question. And I'm also a actor in property schools here. Any potential variances based on cost saving tool? You know, for improvement tonight, would there be a cost saving approach to that? Or is it even more for another reason? Not, not that there'd be another reason, but for the cost saving.
Cost saving to the.
To the school district for going.
Our cost motivation for any of that?
Not that, not as a motivation, but is there a cost savings?
Is there a cost savings?
By improving?
There, there, there would be, I mean, in regards to like parking the wagon and things like that, there would be a cost savings, yes.
There any other questions from the board? Is there a resolution for consideration, anything?
The only other comment I would make was the parking record had given the option to ultimately recommend dedications of open space similar to what has been done in the past, both at Cracker and Sutonia Elementary. A dedication of perpetual open space to Parkland School District on elementary school property would be acceptable. And I think that makes sense to preserve whatever space we can on the school round, future growth, so I'm gonna highlight.
That's what we would do.
Okay, very good, thank you.
So you have enough land in there?
Okay, very good, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Making in, Matt, can you?
Nothing.
All right, that being said, do I hear a motion seeking to move forward to grant a waiver of certain review and approval requirements for the subdivision and land development ordinance for a plan entitled Parkway Manor Elementary School, student drop out, drop out, drop out. We have a motion on the board from Commissioner Long, why do you have a second?
I have a second. Is we need to make a note on the parking record, or is that just an option? We've got two options here listed. Right, Greg?
Sando does specify the board commissioners must approve an alternate visiting need of open space.
Okay.
So, yeah, I would say at least note that you've approved that it's going to the Parkland School District.
Very good, I don't want, I don't need to do that, but like that included in the resolution. That, so is that a separate resolution that I go get included in this one that's unique?
Respect motion.
Greg's suggestion.
Which was what?
Simply by motion.
Oh, by motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that, well, let's, let's finish the, are we gonna finish the, this, we need to do that. You're saying a separate motion?
Because the motion, primary motion is the resolution is.
Yeah. Yes.
So.
So we have a, a motion on the floor for the resolution of Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Kelly, who will, Commissioner what?
Yes.
Commissioner Long.
Yes.
Commissioner Seton.
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly, I think, yes, motion carries. And then the second motion would be to, like the motion that we, we did that the developers donate or dedicate open space to the Parkland School District on the elementary school property of Parkway Elementary School, keeping with this resolution. President.
Question, question to the afternoon. The land is technically our own, but we're full. So it's going to stay where it is. It's just that the purpose is. Oh, I would say they should, they should say that the requirement under Saldo for dedication of open space is being fulfilled by this retention by the school district. Because there's no dedication for it. Mr. Gray.
In previous cases, the school district has actually delineated spots, I guess, in effect, de-restricted them to main, to be maintained as open space in perpetuity. So therefore they cannot build anything else on it. That is the guarantee, guarantee that it will remain open space.
So what would, what would you suggest Dean were to then?
Could be a motion that the open space requirement of Saldo is allowed to be fulfilled by a deed restriction with respect to the appropriate land point.
Would you like to make that motion, Commissioner Kelly, if you have a group? I make a motion that the open space required under Saldo, um, be, what, will it, will it be fulfilled by retention, by deed restriction? By attorney Zager. I think, Tracy, do you have, that's my, sorry. So we have a motion on the floor, as is her I by Attorney Zager, from Commissioner Kelly, wait here a second. Commissioner Seton, can I roll call vote please, Renee? Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Seton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly? Hi. Commissioner Morgan? Yes, motion carries. Gentlemen, thank you very much. Good luck, this is going to, it's going to be an exciting fall in Parkway Manor. All right. Next this evening, for consideration and possible action, we have a resolution extending the conditional preliminary final approval granted to a major subdivision plan entitled KRE Spring View Commercial Two. Mr. Manlon.
With the, given street introduction, um, the property is located at the corner of County Road and Broadway. Plan proposes consolidation of plots for future development. In the highway commercial zone, KRE Spring View Two is the owner and applicant. The board commissioners at a January twenty twenty, we approved major plan. The applicant is requesting a hundred eighty day extension to the designated report for the, uh, staff has no, no objection to this grant.
Okay.
That, that will lead us to the applicant.
Hi, everybody. No, there we go.
It's time around.
No, it was sort of a very group. I don't really have much to add to what Dave said, here simply the request, quickly extension of time period within which this plan has to be recorded. We've been working with Dave, we've been working with Joe's office, Ben, Tony, we have final certificates ready, we have drafts of developer agreements, we have approved construction cost estimate for the security, but there is one issue outstanding, which was in front of this board some time ago, that we're still clearing up with Penda. Though Dave has been doing some of SFI, we would ask that we extend the time period please, for which the plan has to be recorded, so that we can resolve that, and back in front of the board and find out the terms. We're not asking, really, we're determination on the evening, but just to start with, if you extend the time period, that which, all right.
Thank you. Any questions from the board on this request?
Is there any indication from Penda that we can resolve with this next?
Yes, there is indication. I think Dave has had the most recent conversation, I and our consultant office, they would, matter what we resolve. And again, we've, we've been working with various partners here, so that one is resolved, everything else is lined up, developer agreements, courses, etc. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? I do have one question in reading the resolution. And the board granted a hundred eighty days extension on December twenty-third of twenty twenty, so, um, that's nearly two hundred days have passed since then, so are we outside of that one hundred eighty day, where are we with that extension that was, right, there's a difference.
That was a one hundred and eighty day extension from the deadline previously. So the extension did, wasn't a hundred and eighty days from when it was extended, it was from the date, it was added to the date, the deadline date, it was already in place, which was a few weeks after that. The actual one hundred and eighty day deadline is, I believe, the fourteenth?
It's next week.
Next week, yes.
So the one eighty was from, yes, original.
The, the original date was sometime either late December, early January, and because of how the meetings line up, you added a hundred and eighty days from that, not from the date you did it, from the original deadline.
Thanks for the question. Any other questions from the board? Any from the public?
Is there anything, do you have to find out what was?
I don't think, you have, Mike, can you come up here and, you've already reached the area.
What, M five Bryant Street, Great Homes, what's going there? Maybe I'm behind a time line, what's going there, what's proposed, is it in there?
Sure, so, um, what, what was proposed was a small detail building to be built around that, to be honest with you, really just up there, uh, tonight, but, no, but I want to, we've not been able to find it.
Oh, okay.
For, for a new build.
My mistake, I can, we, we brought, I pressure it, it was some sort of, wow.
And, uh, almost impossible, right? We, we would love for it to be a nice sit-down, you know. Maybe not had a lot of success.
Any other questions from the board? Randy, you have anything in that? All right. That being said, then, do I hear a motion to move forward with a resolution extending conditional preliminary final approval granted to a major subdivision plan inside of KRE Spring View Commercial Two. A motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly, wait here a second.
Second.
Second on Commissioner Long, have a roll call vote please, Renee? Commissioner what?
Yes.
Commissioner long?
Yes.
Commissioner Seton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly? Hi. Commissioner Morgan? Yes, motion carries.
Thanks, we, we thought this was a little, all right.
Thank you. Have a good evening. All right. Next this evening, under motions for consideration and possible action, we have a motion requesting permission to proceed with the purchase of playground equipment and purchase holding art. Oh, it's going to be, Mr. Coates, please.
Fix that in the middle of the room.
Um, I'll play, but I couldn't see a reading person again. So, good evening commissioners, um, we're seeking permission to purchase new play equipment for the completion of the Jacoby Park Recreation Project. We worked with a few different co-star vendors, the design that we thought would be very fitting for the space and worked with them a lot of years that worked for this year. So staff has recommended to be purchasing the playground equipment from Recreation Resource USA for total cost of forty-eight thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. That includes the play equipment itself, the shipping and installation of all play equipment, the shape structure and all swings and tops, as well, that's made deliver time, be, be nine weeks from place of order. But we'll say this company worked with us as well, they gave us a, they had a sale, end of the year sale, if you will, or kind of leftover from last year, ended July thirtieth, with how the meetings kind of shook out in July, they're working with us a little bit through this, and that's it for us. This equipment typically is around forty thousand five hundred and forty-one play structures, down to about fourteen thousand dollars on the current.
So, Mike, does it include, like, in, in the picture, is this thing? Yes. Wow.
Yep. That's going to go by, we have some picnic tables planned, currently the picnic table is not in a very good spot, I'll say, for parents to be able to watch this jump in and kind of behind a sewer lid and some other not-so aesthetically pleasing items, so we're going to propose to move it between where the swings that is and the new play structures and the place right there where you see the, the two, Peter, there. That's going to be where we're going to have a picnic table too as well and the, the shade we celebrate.
Just a quick question, and to be of the equipment being, testable and usable or not? It is, well, there's, there's different characters between, in, there's that drop and falling, because it's all being mixed up.
Any questions for, on this particular motion this evening to proceed?
I have a question, Mike, what's the approximate height of this new structure?
I don't know off the top of my head, and see if it's in there. I honestly don't know the height. Okay, um, I know the, the play area itself, we're looking to keep it within fifty by forty, and this one is within forty-seven by forty, it's required playing area, as far as all of them, I'm not sure.
Commissioner Kelly, it's probably about ten to twelve feet tall.
Ten, twelve, and is that about the same size as what is currently there, or will be, it looks like it would be a bit?
It might be two or three feet taller.
So I just had one comment, I took a drive over into that neighborhood, and I raised this question at a Parkland Record meeting, I was there and saw the presentation, I think pulling this all together is a very nice improvement. My only concern then, and I go by and still have concern, is there's six to eight homes that face this, and on their large front windows of their house, and what's there now is very environmental tones, green, brown, and kind of blends in very nicely with the neighborhood. Picture of what is chosen is very bright red, and I'm just thinking in winter, if they're going to look at their front window and they're going to see a very large red slide, and I wonder if some consideration could be made to make it more environmental colors that would blend in more with the neighborhood, so that it wouldn't be as stark the change from what the residents that live there are currently used to.
Um, I think by all means, if that's a pleasure in board, we can look to change the color, whether it's one color or colors.
Wasn't there, Mike, wasn't there an intention behind those colors?
There is, I mean, the, the reasoning behind it, the red was, well, it was kind of multifaceted, for one, we don't really have that in our, our parks, like, the township color plays off the school district color, and the basketball court has been a part also, like, so we thought that it kind of fit for the park specifically because of the, the shade of that.
What, what was the recommendation?
To go with it.
I find it, it's very interesting that you're, you're an intentional color, that's great, I, I just wish I would have seen this down at a not-so compact neighborhood, if you go over to Jacoby Park, that you can see in one of the photos where the swing are hanging. The house is very close to this park, and I know, I think it was Randy who made a suggestion, maybe they, we would plant trees to block the view some, but I think that defeats the purpose of having a nice open neighborhood park. Um, I just don't know that maybe this is the right playground to put that, bright red, and we talked to any of the neighbors, or do we have any idea how they would feel about this change?
We had spoken, I heard, at the start of the college, they spoke to me about, was about the improvements being made, or when they saw me open their open, they came up to talk, and they're just, that's all that's been done, for the most part, they've all very excited, you know, with their, their playground, just kind of, helping to operate.
I mean, a color change is an easy thing, um, the play of the board, but I'm just thinking a bit of this, and thanks to the neighbors and ones that sent it, and.
Just to my personal opinion, for us, and it makes a conversation earlier about, I think, maybe there'll be a little bit on this, and, I think, we can just, we'll prove it as is.
I, I trust the, I mean, I'm sure, I trust the, the thought process behind the Parkland Record. I mean, I think they've put a lot of time and energy and thought in that, and it's quite certain the color was, was a conversation, it wasn't just asset, and so, um, I'm good, I'm good with color, I'm not a problem with that, I think it's.
More time and, and, I want to say, and you probably go with this color, because most people even think, and there may be forty people in this room, if I sat at each other computer, where you can pick the post and the swing and the slot, I, you probably get forty different, you know, colors, it's really personal, and we have other options and other, you know, designs and things, but, um, you know, if I chose this one, you might love it and you might hate it, but like, you know, I mean, it's just really, really hard to, um, get, everybody's going to do that.
Well, I'm glad to, to Commissioner Kelly's comment, I, I mean, I personally, I'm, I'm the, the color presenter, and especially since it's a partner, I would like to discuss, but, but her comment, um, I, I agree, I mean, we need to, I think you had mentioned Randy that says something, you know, there may be an opportunity to add some, some nice shrubbery, and that's a concern, and, you know, definitely.
And that was discussed after, and, and I, I love working, and I think, you know, there are important, creating some sort of natural there, sort of, to.
Well, I have one more comment to make on that, instead of planting new trees, and more money for the township and potentially blocking in the playground. It's not that difficult, it's something that schools should do, it would be easier to choose if you're a color, and use other arrangements to, as we had discussed, or you had discussed the Parkland Record, and intended, um, just, as you said, it's a choice, but range of the guidelines, closing it back to the park is to. Are there any other questions or comments?
I have a question. Question, what is it? Sixty-five thousand dollars in the way, sir?
Any questions or comments? Oh. Need help?
Nothing in the chat.
Um, that being said, um.
Oh, just a comment, it stands out. It does. It's different.
So, does anybody have a motion to move forward to give it the purchase of playground equipment as, just, I can present. We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Long, wait here a second. Yeah, a second from Commissioner Seton, have a roll call vote please, Commissioner what?
Yes.
Commissioner long?
Yes.
Commissioner Seton?
Yes.
I'm going to vote no, I'm totally in favor of the project, I'm just, it's something for the neighbors and, and I reached out to them, Mr. Morgan, yes, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Right. All right. Uh, next this evening, we have. Um, under, we have correspondence and information items, I think before we go into that, Renee, I know recently, I thought this is probably a good point, time to bring this up, we recently submitted our application to D C E D on the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty-twenty-one. Give us, you know, an opportunity to share with the board where we stand as all of that, or next steps are, or what's on, or what's that, put the correct, and stop, and jump in, whatever, to have additional information, but yes, we did, we were required to submit to D C E D by June thirty, and we did an application of sorts, but I don't really want to call it an application, but it was found in the process for you to receive your funds under the American Rescue Fund Act of twenty-twenty-one. So, the township is set to get two million dollars, about two million eighty-eight thousand dollars in total, the first distribution of that will come this year, and will be the one million forty-four thousand dollars approximately. There are, we have just established a bank account, which said that money is separate, and in the next month or two, we'll be kind of, we'll be working with this board and kind of go over plans, ideas, gathering ideas based on what's in the area, what the goal of the plan. All right. So, one.
Renee, could you add just one piece of detail? There's some rule sets. We may get the money at a certain voting time, but there's a timeframe by which you can start and stop spending. That might be worth it.
Well, our expenses from March of twenty-twenty-one, so it doesn't go back to when the payment. And I believe it's by the end of twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four.
Twenty-twenty-four, December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four is, is the timeframe by which the money must be spent.
And that's setting both payments with a, one this year, one next, so.
Yep.
Yeah, there's a lot of guidance on it, and you're still coming out with more, so. More to come on that in the next few weeks, month, pretty, pretty. All right, so, um.
Commissioner Wong. As usual, I'll give a brief update on finance, in course. I actually got three items, but they're all pretty short. Update on the financial audits, thank you once again to Scott Barrett and finance team for making progress. The last committee meeting, we actually spent the entire meeting review and the audit standards. As a result of that, I, I have to ask Renee and Scott to provide the brief written audit status report, so that, you know, we can spend a shorter amount of time on this subject in the future. One thing I wanted to make very clear, as we've given these status reports each time, at this point in time, the finance committee has not met with the auditor for the purpose of reviewing the auditor financial reports, and actually, the twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen audit financial reports are still in progress. So, consequentially, there's, there's no information to report about the audited finances at this time. The next major milestone will occur in August fifth, the South Carolina County Auditor General will present the draft twenty-sixteen to twenty-nineteen audit reports to the finance committee. These reports will include the audit opinion with findings and recommendations, and this will be the first time that the finance committee will actually have discussion with the auditor about the actual audited finances. The work in progress to date has been directed towards this major milestone, and we're looking forward to having that meeting with the, with the auditor. So, thanks once again to Renee, Scott, my team for making progress towards that goal. My second item, this is just the short report, now, again, I'll make a motion. It sounds like a lot, but it's pretty simple. The Pennsylvania Auditor General issued a compliance audit report for the South White Old Township, non-uniform employees, defining contribution pension plan. The auditor general issued that compliance report, it's dated March twenty-twenty-one, and in the report, it says it was issued to President Morgan and our township commissioner, Renee Vickel. It's available on the website for those who want to go look at it. The audit, the compliance audit report has not been presented to this B O C, so I make a motion to place the presentation of the compliance audit report on the agenda for the next B O C meeting. And I, I think that could basically be a report out of, you know, what's in this report, and what are we going to do with that. Is there a second to my motion?
Wong, that's a little. Just to clarify, your motion was to place the audit report on our next.
Yeah, my motion is very simple. This report has been issued by the Pennsylvania Auditor General, and the B O C should be informed about the report, so let's place it on the next B O C meeting agenda. And let's, I presume it's Renee and Scott who make a presentation about here's the report, here's what it says. Yes, yeah. So, I'm, I'm just making a motion to place it on the agenda, so we can discuss this other.
I have a second. Motion on the board to present the audit report, and second by Commissioner Wong, and for Commissioner Wong.
Yes, Paul Ricard, please motion.
Commissioner Wong, question, and then where I broke, Commissioner Wong, repeating again, when was that issued to the township?
Um, well, the date on the report is March twenty-twenty-one.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know when it was transmitted in the law.
And the township manager, President Kansas, when did you receive that report?
I don't know, the, the, the report is, report is there, it's online.
Okay, and, so did you receive it closer to that March date?
Yeah, five months.
Okay, I have a question, why was it not distributed to the members of the board?
The members of the board didn't review. Did they?
Did, did all the commissioners get that report? No. It's been four months since, since the auditor general made the report, I'm just wondering why it's been four months and the full board is not having it formed, apparently, why? Commissioners, has anyone not received the report?
Um, so my, my, my knowledge of the report, it's, it's come up in conversation at the last finance committee meeting, some questions were asked about it, and the auditor answered those questions. I actually received the report by going to the Pennsylvania Auditor General website yesterday, and if you Google it, it's the top hit, and there it is, that's how I received it.
So, my understanding is it was distributed to President and, but it was never distributed to the full board officially through the township manager, the board president, and the press.
I can't even, I, I have to be honest, I don't even know how, or what, I don't see the, I don't see it personally. At the end of the day, in terms of whether it goes out before, that is not the exact part of what is the finding. Or, I'm not sure. So, at the end of the day, I mean, I think we even hold on the board. Yeah, and they do hold, yeah. So, why are you looking for that, and you want to do the whole call? Oh, we have a long one.
Uh, there was an email sent on February seventh to the full board that has all of the exit memos from the pension on it, which include the D C plan, the office plan, the police plan, and the public. February seventh. Very soon. Yep.
I'll call it right back.
So, that's, that's the, Scott, that's the exit memos.
Which are the findings of the audit.
Okay.
Yeah, and you receive that after the exit.
All right.
Is it, so, just, is that something that gets presented to the board or teammate? Yeah, well, you don't, I know those people.
May I ask a question, under, at the time, I don't know for old business, but since Mr. Commissioner Wong, or, I had a question at the last meeting, that finance committee could be opened to the public?
That's my third subject.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let's finish this one, and we'll go straight to that.
All right.
So, why did you still call all of them?
Just real quick, what, what is that?
I'm sorry, yeah, that's a long time.
The, the, the motion is, is that the next B O C meeting agenda will include an item, which is a presentation of the Pennsylvania Auditor General compliance audit report. It'll, it'll be a, it'll be a basic communication and information session on this subject.
And I'm a public question, and just Google the report. I think it was, I think Commissioner Kelly asked the question, this may be presented at future points, but it says there were two issues here where the township was not compliant. With that, I think Commissioner Kelly asked the question, is that our team will present to the board, since the report apparently found there were two instances where the township was not compliant, when would that issue have been raised, by the full board?
It was sent to the full board, sent to the full board.
Full board, okay.
This, this sort of, the conversation surrounding this is why I recommend we should just present it and discuss it.
I think with the motion, we can move to the other part, take your whole call, please. Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Commissioner Sutton? Commissioner Wong? I, Commissioner Wong, yes, motion carries. Okay.
So, my third item, I'm going to make a motion, and it's on the subject Mr. Kennedy raised that we discussed at the last meeting, which was having finance committee meetings open to the public. I believe at the last meeting, we sort of like said, okay, well, consider it. I'm going to make a motion to try to move the goal forward, and the motion is very simple. I make a motion that future South White Old Township finance committee meetings will be advertised and will be open to the public.
I still don't think it's, you, you make it sound, Commissioner Wong, like it's, that's simple, and I, I don't, it's not a transparency issue at all, it's, it has nothing to do with that. What it does have to do with is, if we can't have any internal meetings without having everybody at every meeting, how are we supposed to get anything accomplished? And my question is, if we open up all these meetings, or the finance committee meetings to the full, to everybody, that means they need to be advertised, like you had mentioned, and there's a cost associated with all of those things. Everything that goes on in a finance committee meeting, all the discussions, it's also related at a public board meeting, but what's the point in having middies if we're going to open them up to everybody and have, it doesn't, I, I'm losing logic here, because everything's talked about how big we meet and board initiatives.
I haven't thought about your last point, but my initial reaction to it is, I don't think that's true at all. I, I don't think everything we discussed at the finance committee meeting and all the other committee meetings is, is faded here entirely. But let's, let's go to your other point, what, what is your initial point about, what is the, what is the issue or problem with opening this up to the public?
It's, I, I don't, it's not, it's not an issue as far as opening it up to the public, it's a logistics issue. It becomes very cumbersome to open up all these meetings to everybody, advertise them, have, I mean, it's, it's a completely different style meeting. I'm not, I'm not against having the public listen in, but it made sense to have smaller committee meetings where you can have in-depth conversations, and then relaying that information back out at a board commissioner meeting, but that's not the intent of having committees.
Oh, okay. All right, I, could I just say, I, I really enjoy a conversation for what's the possible things, you know, that's what we're, that's why I really like that. The, the way, the way I would envision this, and this falls on from the discussion at the last meeting, I, I would envision it, it's, it's still the same committee, it's two commissioners who happen at this point in time to be Commissioner Kelly and myself, and it's Renee, and it's Scott, and Randy, Randy sits in. The only change is by opening it up to the public, they can be present, and if you want to put other rule sets around it, like they can be present, they don't participate, maybe they can make a comment during the courtesy of four section of it. I, I wouldn't see it changing the functionary operation of the finance committee meeting, simply because people are allowed to sit in and listen. So, I mean, that's, that's my comment about, you, you know, your thought there. The other part, I'm just saying, we, we currently take whatever happens there and come here and report it out. I suppose we've been doing a better job.
Just a real quick question for the board, there's a motion, and there's a second here.
Well, yeah, there's still discussion, but why?
Well, maybe just a quick comment, Commissioner Wong gave that, about, different, logistical, logistical thing in terms of making, maybe make it, I don't remember the exact words, but maybe it's a public comment, group comment, that sort of thing, so, Commissioner Wong's point, logistically, we made a motion, really, I have any idea of the effect it would be on, on this app, but, what the rules would be, parameters would be, so I think to this point, it seems pretty, pretty mature to make that motion.
I made the motion to generate this conversation and to try to make progress on this subject, rather than anything where we ended at the last meeting, which was, we'll look into it, and that never goes anywhere, all right? So, that's, that's.
Why don't you put some thoughts together and reach out to all of us, and we can start to generate if there's something that we need to consider to put rules or some sort of guidelines around it with consideration, but to blindly make a, a motion with, that opens up all these other questions, I, I don't have any.
Okay. I think that's fair.
Is it possible for us to discuss this at the next finance committee meeting next week? As someone that this directly involves, I feel like I should have some input into this, and perhaps there's a solution that we can, perhaps we can achieve the goals that, that are hoped to achieve with the purpose of, of making it public through discussion, I, I would just want to be included and involved in that.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And then share the, the thoughts and ideas.
Yeah, okay, that's good.
Okay.
I wasn't thinking, I'm repeating myself now, and I wasn't talking about major changes, major impact on the committee, major impact on the staff. I mean, we continue doing what we're doing, we can even meet at the same time, it's just that other people are present.
Well, I think if I understand you correctly, what you're asking for is what all our other boards and commissions do there, open to the public. Really good, because it's a take, it's a, that was a change, it's a subcommittee, so, you're all, we have time, so with you. But, Scott, to your point, I know we discussed at the last finance meeting, it had been as practiced in twenty-fifteen and seventeen, I don't know if it was prior to that, that the finance report was given mid-month to the full board, actually in writing, it was a written report, and we talked about the benefits of doing that, moving forward, especially since. We talked about the benefits of doing that move forward, especially since we're, um, just getting out of this ten-year lack of audit place, to have something in writing that we would include with the three minutes of the board to memorialize moving forward, uh, what actions were taken to remedy and, and right the, uh, the issues of audits and how we got over that, or maybe that's something we can consider.
Yeah, so, so on that subject, not, not to go on too long on this. The auditor is gonna be, give us a record on that subject. And ultimately, that will be recorded here at the DOC meeting.
So, are you, like, are you still having a motion?
Um, no, I, I, I appreciate it, I appreciate the discussion. I, I, I think we'll, we'll take the action, we'll discuss that at the next committee meeting. Come back with something a little more fleshed out, and I appreciate having this conversation here tonight.
Well, I, I highly suggest if you, you have discussion at any meeting, and there's, there's something we can put together, basically guidelines, or something for us to talk about, get it to the full boards, and we can start thinking about this and interacting and talking. You know, there's, there's a lot that can happen, you can share parts of discussion back and forth, even prior to the meeting, that's.
Yes.
It's allowed and good, so we should do that.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you. Um, let's see, is there a motion?
Okay. I'll, sure.
Okay. Um, all right, so, I do wanna mention that the grant advisory committee met on June twenty first, right? So, I'm gonna defer to Mike on just some of the highlights of, of the meeting. I, I had to read a little early, so, Mikey, you wanna just kind of comment on those?
Sure, yeah, just a couple of quick highlights for you. The environmental plastic use survey is out to the businesses right now. Another highlight from the meeting was, uh, the fact that we're looking to partner with the Leah Valley Conservation District, um, to have them possibly be the grantee, uh, for a potential grant opportunity to bring some educational signage and a new pollinator garden, and just some basic upgrades down in Cover Bridge Park. We're working with them, um, on that possible, uh, uh, grant right now. We re-discussed the, um, option of going to the Parkland High School Conservation Club and getting those students back involved with our club here, starting this fall, once, uh, the school's back in session, and hopefully the pandemic continues to go away. We initially had reached out to those students to, to get involved with us, and then the pandemic hit, so it kind of really shut everything down. But we're looking to, to reengage the conservation club with us. And last but not least, I'll just touch on the recycling event that was on May twenty-second up there at Parkland High School. It was estimated that there were, there were five to six hundred cars that came through, and there was thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-two pounds of materials that were diverted from the landfill and put to good use and recycled, um, because of that event.
That, that was an amazing event, and, and they recycle every piece of those electronics. They do it right here in the time alley, that's pretty impressive. Great, thank you. And the next schedule date is for GAC is July nineteenth.
Correct.
Um, at six P M. So, I'll also note that our Public Safety Commission meets on Monday, July twelfth, at seven P M. Our Civil Service Commission meets at one P M on Wednesday, July fourteenth. And our Planning Commission meets at seven thirty P M on July fifteenth, and again, GAC will meet on July nineteenth at six P M. Um, meeting for July fourteenth, Thursday, and meeting for Civil Service. Thank you. All right, thank you. And, um, just a reminder, um, we have some vacancies still, if you know anybody who's interested in application. We have our Civil Service Commission, we have one vacancy, it's an alternate position. Landscape Shading Tree Commission, two vacancies, and Park and Rec, or, which are two, um, Parkland, um, school district positions, pointing to be handled, two vacancies there. On, on the Park and Rec. All right, I just have a question about that, Randy, maybe you can, or, hey. Why are there vacancies on Park and Rec for the school systems?
Sure, so they updated the first-class township code, and it required the, um, all the members to be residents of the township. And the two school board members we did have, although they were faculty, they were not residents of the township. So we were sad to see him go, but we do have two, uh, good applicants in mind that will hopefully be brought into the board here shortly. Right.
I guess I was just wondering, since they were faculty and, and used to, that have been attending or not.
They, they are faculty.
Well, they are both.
And residents, yep, they're both.
They have to be a resident. Right, the two members that are.
Yep.
Attending and interested are.
They are, yep, they're eligible.
All right, any other questions on our correspondence information? I have a question about the top plan, um, is it good time, or should I just? We had the meeting last week, I guess it was, for the working groups, Michael Baker, and there was, um, an economic model that was presented, and during the course of the presentation, um, the, I don't remember which, didn't know who first talked about, but they identified that our current development that has been approved but is not yet built, specifically Ridge Farm, um, was not factored into that economic model. And there were a lot of questions about that, um, also that vehicles and buildings weren't included in that economic piece either. And that's nine hundred dwellings, and I just was curious what, or who directed them not to include that impactful development in our foundational top plan as we're moving forward to begin working groups. It seems that we really don't have the full picture if we don't include what we know is already going to be built.
I can answer that.
Yeah.
So the information was provided to Todd Poole, who was the modeler on that. I think his approach to it was, because it was a hypothetical model, he used the information that was provided as part of the, how do we grow? Um, and didn't include that Ridge Farm. I've been in discuss with, discussions with him about that Ridge Farm and some of the approved development, and how we can evaluate that included in the model. One of the great things about having that model, the baseline set up, is we can go back in and model things. The timing isn't exactly perfect for the working groups to have that information. However, that doesn't preclude, once it comes to the planning commission, and we start having the planning commission workshops, where we can have that included in and evaluate if that needs to change or alter any of the recommendations coming out of the working groups.
So, is, that, let's assume it does have planning, and the planning commission decides we should factor that in, is that, that, after the work that's been done to date, or that it's gonna go for all the working groups for the next couple of weeks?
It doesn't, I think, the, the vision of what's coming out of the working groups is for the planning commission to get an idea of public opinion based on all of the public outreach. The planning commission then kind of evaluates that and makes changes to it that they feel based on new information, or if there's a discrepancy or conflicting recommendations, the planning commission would, um, alter those recommendations so they're consistent. So I don't think it's gonna delay anything. I think it is a valuable piece of information that should be included when we get to the planning commission. That said, I also envision it coming up in discussion in working groups, for sure. But it won't be plugged into the model for those. You know, I kind of, after his presentation, you know, it was very apparent that we should bring him back in and have him run additional things through that model.
I guess my question, though, is, as the working groups are looking with, with their data that they're gonna have, is it gonna skew their views if they're not presented with a full picture of that impactful development? I mean, is there, is it too late to do it now and, and get this on solid footing and have that complete package for the working groups?
I can certainly see how quickly you can turn it around. Next week is our first working group. First working group meetings. I believe housing is scheduled for Wednesday. I think the housing working group is probably the one most interested in the economic, um, model. So I think at least having the information for that meeting may not be possible to get incorporated into the model, but we can at least get some information related to impacts. Cause Todd knows the model very intimately, and I could probably just pose the question to him, and he can kind of discuss outputs that he would expect to see. He does have a app that they're working on that is instantaneous. So you can plug something in and you get an instantaneous response. That's in beta testing, advocating for us to be one of the first testing rounds. So, between that, I'll hope to get some information out of it, um, particularly for the housing, and then moving, definitely moving forward when we get out of the working.
Very good, thank you. And one other.
Yeah. It's okay, it's okay. So, data just clarification, um, so thank you for talking through the, uh, the subject of Ridge Farm not being included in the economic model. I, I just wanted to tie this point down. So, I believe our transportation consultant, Scott.
Yes.
I believe he, he said that Ridge Farm is included in his traffic analysis.
Yes.
All right.
So, that was kind of our confusion at the staff level was the transportation model included a base build and then a recent build, so it included everything in the pipeline. And then Todd's model didn't include that, so it was kind of a differing aspect of the models that, you know, we kind of had to deal with.
One quick follow-up, um, one other comment that Todd made, um, has to do with, he was talking about schools and how, um, population is declining, student enrollment is declining, schools are closing wings, that sort of thing. And I remember he made a similar comment, um, last February, March, or, oh, we had one meeting. And that statement was made then, and I remember, um, multiple people had a conversation with him in the public meeting, but that may be true nationally, but here in the Parkland School District, we're not a norm in that department. You know, we're building and adding up to schools. And I guess it just concerned me that the correction was made a year ago, that, hey, wait a minute, South White Hill and, and Parkland School District is, is a little bit different than what you'd probably normally see. And that same sentiment was brought again to this meeting we just had last week. Is there something that we can do as a township to kind of bring him up to speed more with the particulars that we are very lucky to have here as a.
Yeah, it, the, part of the issue with his approach to the model was it was the hypothetical build-out is what he was modeling, and that's kind of outside of the box usage of that model. So he had to kind of make some adjustments and not go full in to contacting the board editor, and doing that further research. That said, when we get to planning commission, you know, I, again, I envisioned having just, you know, Todd in the model, and if we have the, um, the app set up, he'll have that opportunity to do the further research, because we'll potentially be talking about specific development. And if the app is up and running, we can kind of go through it and make adjustments and kind of see what the impact, impacts are. So, yes, I do wanna get him up to speed on the, um, Parkland School District situation, do a little more research with that. He also discussed, um, emergency and management, so fire and police. He would have to do additional research and contact the chiefs and, um, get operational plans and things like that. So there's a lot more that can go into the model, and because it was so hypothetical, he had to kind of step back and just run that hypotheticals. It's kind of where that model ended up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions or comments, or comments and suggestions? So, for me, do you have any other for us on, we have a few items on our old business. There's sand, credit cards, um, which are good. Nothing holds change on the way to sand, unless we're real first, but, yeah, we, so we, you think we have a grant, and our submission details is, you know, there's, um. Credit cards are lying, credit cards pay with, five.
Venmo. We had one person pay with Venmo this week.
Venmo, wow.
They didn't go with Venmo.
Cutting it.
No, 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 no cryptocurrencies.
I'll never take it off, I'll take it off.
Yeah.
And we put our, I'm sure we've heard about this, but we're gonna put another something that we've been going on.
Yes, that went out with the refuse bill. If you received your craft bill this week, uh, you should have seen, uh, you can pay. Um, and it actually directs you to the website, uh, where you can pay on the website. So, in the future billings, we'll, we'll have that there. And there's, there's a frequently asked question sheet on the website as well, and, uh, some, uh, instructions there that show you how to set it. It's pretty, it's pretty basic. We had like fifty-eight payments just this week, and that was before we sent the bill out. So I imagine people are gonna be, I'm optimistic that, that it should, uh, it should be utilized well, so.
Is there a third, the third part of the?
It is, yep, yep. There's a two dollars and ninety-five cents fee per five hundred dollars.
You can always pay with your banks, most banks after, okay? That's been in place for years, and we, we receive a lot of the bank checks, or, or free, usually.
I have a question on all of it, when you finish.
Yeah, and Hydras, maybe, that, that was.
I can give a brief update. One of the things we kind of experienced tonight is the sound issue and the mics and public. So, one of the, the biggest hurdle technology-wise is getting the audio feed into the computer into the live feed. So we're meeting with, not C S I, S S I, one of the I's. To have a, basically, and I forgot what they call it, but an audio box where everything feeds to, and then that would feed directly into the computer, and then the audio system would be a direct feed. We wouldn't have to worry about feedback.
I think that would be good, from a top, and not having.
Also, looking at hardwiring a mic at the podium, uh, are some things that we're looking at. That's the technology side, legal side is still kind of out there.
I can report on that if we're able to do so. I did take a look at this issue, in particular, I focused on the current status of the governor's executive order, the legislation, the first-class township code, the public meetings law. And it's my legal conclusion that if the board chooses to have hybrid meetings, uh, you can do so. It's optional, there are some.
There are some requirements you will need to keep in mind. First of all, it is required that it not be entirely virtual as it could be during the COVID period. Legislation. There must be a physical meeting location ordinarily, of course, it will be this room. And in addition, based on the change to the first class township code occurred several months ago, it's necessary that all commissioners be physically present unless you adopt a telecommunications policy. And under that policy, you could then get by with only a corner being physically with two, up to two commissioners being participants remotely in virtual platforms sort of. There are a few details that I want to speak with the board and township manager about the executive session. But what I just mentioned is by and large, the inclusion and factor information. I would also note that what I just stated is really core of the township. And I exclude from that is the on hearing board, which is an independent decision that needs the, the on hearing board. We need to get a supervisor, a solicitor, I believe that's been rendered. Well, that's it. Is there any questions about that?
So I think, I guess there's still unanswered questions, maybe somebody's for executive session to throw on that, I'm sure. But, you know, I guess my question would be, if this was a long-term option for us, you know, we have to think about the comment dragging. Like, you know, how do you, you know, like chat or like if there's stuff coming through. I, there's just like little details that you don't want to think about. How does that work? If you have to have all that information, that will and we certainly need to work on a policy. You know, in my opinion, if we chose to go and stick with a hybrid style meeting, I think it would be very, very important that if somebody was participating remotely virtually, that they would have to be on camera when they spoke. It would be, it would be like they'd be in the audience, but on camera. And, you know, their name and that, it's just like anybody else told me, but it couldn't be, it couldn't be by phone. Couldn't join the meeting by phone. But I think that that would be only fair. That's, that would be my, that's just like the, I guess, a hybrid option.
And once we get the audio piece, I mean, aside from the legal issues and the interaction, it is helpful for us to be able to have that capability to patch right into it. So that's something that we're looking for, looking to do regardless of how we handle it. And once we do that, testing how the feedback comes in, not feedback, but somebody commenting through the go to meeting platform, how that comes through and things like that, you know, we'll have to test it and see how, how it works and, you know, I, I think we can kind of play it by ear, so to speak, no pun intended. Once we get a better feel for how that is going to work from a technology side.
Your stand with the technology.
I have a question. I know last May, this board approved to move to Granicus as our platform and to move away from Board Docs. So we're doing all of this work and we're still with Board Docs is, where are we with Granicus? We're supposed to have that.
Well, we are, we're, this has multiple different modules to it. Repeat agenda system, we're working through, we have a new project manager who just met. We're working through several heads of project footage videos. So that's what we need to try and add all that.
And one of the pieces is that audio video connection that would then go to the Granicus, which would then live feed. So that's kind of the first step. And then once we get that live feed, then the peak in the meeting manager, they have a lot of names for different pieces. And the meeting manager is the big piece where we can tag video that corresponds with agenda items and things like that. So once we get kind of that IT solution fixed, then it opens the door for finally getting that Granicus up and running.
So then, how long, a month, a couple of months?
Well, I think we're going to have to test things and see how it works.
So I, I think we have the initial meeting with CSI next week and then depending on the outcomes of that, we'll schedule the Granicus meeting and then start rolling it out. So month. I say a month, but it always turns into more, so.
It can involve training and involves Tracy has to be doing stuff, working, media tagging video and stuff. Which is a little bit more difficult on the front end process of and go to replace on Board Docs. The brand is here actually sitting back. Just this problem, we probably should have mentioned this actually when we look back at this building. The first meeting, because we haven't had this in the past. If anybody does need an assistant listening device or hearing, we do have that capability. So you just need to let us know that you have your pieces for people who are.
And, and that's again, how important the audio. So it has to go through the microphone for it to be picked up through that. So that's kind of, again, the other piece of the puzzle.
So nobody has tested them yet, but they are available.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to ask. What is the latest on the King George? And maybe I missed something along the way. I haven't seen, I'm looking.
They were, they were just in front of us.
They just received an extension. Yes. There's issues with Pendot and Stormwater are kind of the big hurdles that they're trying to overcome. I I have a feeling like it was September.
You have leverage over that, these people?
Well, it's, you're going to.
No, no.
Because it's not, it's not their, it's not their fault. It's their, their feeling with, you know, other agencies that they're kind of got now on stage as well.
A lot of people that ask.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
You got it. All right. We have any questions in chat? So at this point in our meeting, we have the opportunity of purchasing a board. Is there anybody in the hall? Wow, I saw a panel on the way back first. I'm going to order a hand raising. Please, a question. There's multiple mics on your side.
This whole board is all fine.
Well, I mean, I just can't place them. So you've got to switch out.
Perfect. Yes, I was going to say, I was shopping with this guy. I was a little up and matters, he's all Lance and Equities and I was going to stop. That would be appropriate.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. I would say I was here a few months ago, but it was done remotely. I think it was back at an equal meeting. We requested that the board advertise and amend the zoning ordinance. A little history, I think, or you are the same board members. Mr. Long said that. I represent Lance and Equities pursuant to the NPC inter ordinance, we filed a landowner initiated request. That went to the planning commission and the planning commission recommended some changes to the ordinance, which the applicant made and the planning commission recommended that. I then came in because the next step is a public hearing needs to be done. So at this point, like I said last time when we were, when we were dealing with this remotely, all we are asking is to, quote unquote, power day in court and that the township advertise a public hearing for the enactment of the amendments. But we do advertise it doesn't mean you have to say you're in favor or not in favor. It just lets us come in and make a presentation at a public hearing that's advertised. So anyone from the township residents in will see that and will be able to list it and we will have a public hearing. I'd like a public hearing on that proposal.
Per, per se to the audience, I know they won't be able to speak, but you might not know what ordinance is.
Sure.
The one that's.
Yeah, the title was one thing like starting, but after the changes requested by the planning commission, the title is now an ordinance amending section 350 dash 48 N9 capital E Roman ad sets of the Southway County Zoning Ordinance to modify the distance restriction between two motor service vehicle facilities. So there's currently a restriction with respect to motor service vehicle facility that our position is, is not necessarily in the best interest of the public health state, human welfare. And actually speaks from back to the early 1900s and other ordinances. Our position is it should, it should be modified. Planning commission agreed with us, not unanimously, but with a wide majority recommended this. And again, the next step is out of request. Maybe at least give us a chance to have a public hearing as we consider whether, if we choose to adopt that change of this report. Yeah, and it would allow under very limited circumstances, a second gap, a second motor vehicle service facility that serves gasoline. You know, the ordinance provides that it has to be on opposite side of the road and the road, and the roadway of the larger designation. If that, if that intersection of, you know, a four-way intersection. So there's one conditions. In all hands, the initial proposal was to get rid of the, which the board's planning commission did not like that and came up with what we thought was a really good solution, which we've incorporated into the amendments. Which is, if you'd like me to read it, one motor service vehicle service facility may be located within 1,500 feet of no more than one other under the following conditions. Two such facilities are separated by a public road and when located at the intersection of two public roads are separated by a public road of the high extreme class. So the thought, I think, which you would say if you arrive pretty much anywhere in the league, I doubt it is not uncommon to have two gas stations on the opposite side of the highway.
Just to make it clear, so you're looking tonight to have to come through that qualification, the ordinance?
Just that you have a hearing at which we could, at which we would make a presentation and then the board would at that time have the opportunity to vote on. So all we're asking for today, what I've asked the board is, I'd like my day in court with these main ideas.
So Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
So, Pramay, what you just said, you're here tonight making the exact same request that you made the last time?
Absolutely.
And I guess the difference is last time we had four board members and now we have five.
Yeah, the motion needed carried, so it's through two last time. And it's not uncommon when there are a lot of meetings and there's four members. I'm only pursuing it until I have my own number because that allows the board, the full board to vote and I want to agree with the board.
Right, okay, so just, you know, throwing that point out. So thank you for the update and reminding us of everything that occurred. I'm going to do my best to state a main point of conversation that we had at the last meeting. I was a key participant and as was Commissioner Kelping. And there was a reason I voted no. There, there are two paths to achieve what you want to achieve. One path is to go to the zoning hearing board and request a zoning variance for the single property. And for some reason, you've chosen not to go that path. Come back to that point.
I don't know if you've seen it, sorry, I mean, last time, but.
Okay, well, just, in a minute, oh, let's have you do that. Instead, you've come here and a zoning change changes the ordinance for the entire township and has an impact across the entire township, including any unintended consequences. If you're a large township, we have a lot of acreage that's not, you know, yet developed. It could have an impact on already developed areas or, you know, future development areas. So my point, I guess I'll ask the question, why not go to the zoning hearing board and ask for a variance for this single property?
Because, because as I mentioned last time, for what we are requesting, this is the more appropriate path firstly. And secondly, I have an absolute right of receiving a weapon. So just because one person may say, I'd like you to do it differently. I don't, I don't agree with it that that is the more appropriate way. This is the more appropriate weapon to address this type of provision in a zoning ordinance, number one. And number two, if there are two equal paths, I can continue to select this one and ask this final number board to agree with at least three of that, to agree the whole way public hearing behind your press. Again, you're welcome to continue to vote no and you can vote no, we'll be, we'll be having a public hearing. But I have the right to do this and it's the appropriate path.
Okay, okay, that's fine. Making a statement about your right to do this. Why do you feel this is the most appropriate path?
Because this type of provision in the ordinance should be modified for a text amendment. A variance is a different procedure for different circumstances. This type of provision in the ordinance, that's why the NPC and your zoning ordinance both commit landowner initiated changes to the zoning orders, both for map changes. When I say a land is on residential and I want it to be commercial or for text changes. So, and based on my, gosh, 29 years of experience now, having done this, for a provision such as this, a distance provision between uses that I believe is outdated, it is appropriate to come in and request a text change.
Is there a way to make a text change for just this single property? Or must it be done for every property in the township?
You're right, I mean, you can do whatever you want. I will suggest to you though, number one, that I will glad to, at a hearing, have an engineer explain the limited impact of this change. It's not as if every corner of the township will allow a gas station. You have to remember, the underlying zoning to even allow the gas station to begin with, number one. And number two, I harden back to the majority of the planning commission like what we're putting before you receiving. So even though you may feel, I mean, limited even more strictly. Personal opinion, that's fine, but planning commission took what we had, which would have been broader and said, no, no, that's too broad. But we think with this constraint, that I'm afraid it is now strict enough. Thank you.
I will just add. I recall the solicitor who was present at that April 20th meeting. I have a note that he advised this board that there's more than one way to secretly, one is the zoning hearing board for a variance and a zoning change solely of discretion with the board, which we would certainly explain to us tonight, but I guess I'm confused with Michelle's question. Commissioner Holt's question asking if you can do this just for this one property? If, if that can be done with a text amendment for one property, why isn't that what you're asking?
It because it's appropriate for, in my opinion, I can offer a proposal to the township that was in a more appropriate change. I, I hope the landowner initiative change typically, you could tailor something to try to get a to try to limit it so much that it would be applied to a pure property. I don't think that's right, Mrs. Holt. I think there's a limited scope, but it's not just this property, but other properties in similar situated circumstance should have a similar right. So I, it is not my position that I should come in and say, we're special and you've got to do this just for us. Theoretically, and we're this, sometimes people pass ordinances, they don't realize it does apply. You pass the ordinance that says you have to have a hundred acre minimum. You don't look to see how many property you have in the township that are making it a hundred acres. Oh, lo and behold, it turns out to be one. So it could impact one, no one realized that. And this is, this, it wasn't my intention to say be special, treat us differently. Theoretically, it's texted, but, but the appropriate way to do it is to come up with something that you think should apply to, eh, eh, this situation where a gas station is allowed. And as I said, again, I, I, in fact, like most zoning ordinances, was suggesting to take the limitation out of the hierarchy. Planning commission, for legitimate reasons, didn't agree and made it even stricter. So we'll have much less limited application. That's, I, I, I don't think it's appropriate for me to come in and say, just change something and let's make it, let's, let's, so it's just mine. Now, it's more appropriate for me to say, I don't have the restrictions to apply in the first place, but the planning commission convinced me it was a good idea to put some restrictions on it and that's what we've done.
Pretty much agree. First of all, cars are coming up, so issues that, that, and, and ordinance updated.
I'll, I'll just comment that, you know, that you repeated a lot of what you had previous to come in on. I think the approach makes sense. I think the fact that the planning board signed and, and agreed and has the system of view on all of this should, should be thought about attentively, which has been. And also, like Commissioner said, and then integrated ordinance, we, we need to think about how it ultimately affects us today. So I, I, I agree with the approach. I think that makes the most sense.
Just a quick comment, although it wasn't a short time, I did attend the meeting adversely, so I heard all of the information.
I do have access, sorry for.
No, that's okay. I appreciate, appreciate the summary on that. You know, obviously, uh, when I understand, I heard you discuss fully the logistics just from a philosophical standpoint from me and I found you and the township board. And there's things that are antiquated that need to be adjusted. And I think that's the new idea, but this point is simply to, uh, with your case. And so, um, presumably, I don't know if there's any other comments that you made, but I maintain the motion at this point.
Are there any comments from the audience?
So we, we, we do have a motion then on the floor to move forward with.
Advertising.
Advertising for a public hearing. So we have motion on the floor from, um, Mr. Wong, that's second, Mr. Sen. You know, the deep aspect of procedural questions, this has never happened under my term. Coming in on the courtesy of the floor, making motions for advertising. That's typical, or do they normally go back for some township staff and they develop that?
I, I, I have my position.
They're allowed to, this board would be allowed to make a motion tonight to proceed to a hearing. Right. To advertise for a year, and that's great. Yes. This is particular draft, again, it has to follow all the other procedures, but at this point in time, the only formal action we're escaping is to authorize the advertisement. And so obviously the township was aware because the solicitor showed up tonight.
Yeah, I did work that I wanted to come in because I knew if I came in that I, I couldn't say anything tonight because your solicitor would refuse himself like he did last night. So I did work the township that wanted to come in. But he had agenda, whole business, perfectly, it didn't matter to me. I was going to say the same thing, no matter what me, I would have liked to be a liar, but, but I was saying the same thing. So it wasn't my call.
What do you mean, it's only twenty-one.
All right, so we, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Can we call Commissioner Wong?
No.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly? Just for reference point, um, we are in the midst of condition our plan and getting ready to do a zoning update. Do not feel it's appropriate to make a zoning change at this point. So now I have data during this, and I would recommend, I would advocate those zoning hearing to stay here for your property. Commissioner Wong, yes.
Okay, thanks.
All right, is there anybody else on the courtesy of the floor this evening? Anybody ready? Do we have anybody on?
Nothing in the chat.
All right, do you want to hear a motion? Oh, yes.
The, uh, the public hearing last Monday, is there a time that's going to be posted?
Right, and I was looking like it's going to continue on August tenth.
And that's the recording from the meeting, is there a time that's going to be posted?
We have that case in term, yeah. Yeah, by then, probably next week, I don't know, back next weekend and next week.
Probably, I would say probably this week, I'd be interested.
Dave and I have another couple of stuff, I said.
Probably next week, Dave.
All right, thank you.
All right, can I have a motion for adjournment?
Uh, don't you want to picture this, boys?
Oh, I'm so excited, I'm leaving. I hope we get to do the invoices. I got them all excited. All right, our invoices have been reviewed by the township manager and the director of finance. I need a motion to authorize our checks to be issued to pay our bills as heavily as we can. Your second motion on the floor from Commissioner Wong, your second, and Commissioner Kelly. That will pop up a different. Commissioner Wong.
Yes.
Commissioner Wong.
Yes.
Yes. I have motion to adjourn please. Motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly, your second. Second from Commissioner Tenal, your third. All of those, you want to take care?